Welcome to the regular City of Bellevue Council meeting for August 1st, 2022. We're kind of excited because this is our last meeting before our August break. We've got a lot on our agenda, but I wanted to first talk about an email that I received on July 22nd from Jed Shine, who told us that our Newport High School won the second place in the International Rocketry Challenge in London. They traveled to London. And this group placed ahead of, let's see, Japan came in first. I think they were an all-women team and the first time they had ever placed in an event. And then it was you representing the United States and then France and the United Kingdom. So we were so impressed that you pulled that off. We were following your progress in the regional competition and then the national competition and now the international. And I couldn't believe when we got this email. So we wanted to invite you to step up to the microphone. And actually, I did want to mention the people who are on your team, and I'll try to say their names right. So we had Arthur Guoats, Samuel Chen, Rita Liu, Rose Liu, Brandon Lau. Is it Lau or Liu? Lo, thank you. Ethan Lo, Kevin Manis Fazigum, Vanu Rao, Shreya Sabramian, and Mingham Sun. So we're just really impressed. We have four of you. Come on up, tell us your names and tell us how it went for you.
I'm Rose Liu. We are Team Graveyard of Newport High School of Bellevue, Washington, from Newport High School down by Factoria. And we represented the United States at the Farnborough International Air Show, as Team USA. This is a little bit more about us. I'll pass this off to Shreya.
Hi, I'm Shreya. I'm currently a rising senior at Newport High School. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the national competition first. So our team competed in Virginia at the American Rocketry Challenge, and we managed to place first, beating out 723 other teams. And each flight is based off of two criteria: flight altitude and flight duration. And the more points you score, the lower you place. So we managed to have the lowest score out of all those 723 teams. And our school actually made history, being the first school to have two teams place first and second at the competition. So the other team which represented Newport placed second, unfortunately, they weren't able to come to the international competition with us. But yeah.
Yeah, so at the international competition, it was at Farnborough Air Show, as Rosie mentioned, and we had to launch this rocket to a height of 835 feet, which is over 200 feet higher than the Space Needle. And yeah, so at the competition, we had to look at the data that we gathered throughout the year to determine how much mass we should add to the rocket to make it go higher or lower. And we also had to assemble the rocket, put it on the rail, which is, I mean, we had to take it to the middle of the airfield and then set it up and launch it. Our rocket actually went to a height of, I think it was 860 feet, or 760 feet, sorry. And that was the second-best score out of the four teams there. So yeah, we got second place.
Yeah, and on top of the launch component, there was also a presentation component of the challenge. And to practice for that, we had a ton of practices, working with all our friends, family, alumni from the club. And everyone worked super hard together to get us there, and it paid off. We got an almost-perfect score of 19 out of 20 on the presentation part, which is the highest in the history of the competition. So we're pretty proud of that.
Well, that's wonderful. Do you have anything more?
As we look back into your year, our team has been through countless challenges that we have worked together to overcome. To achieve our dreams of having lasting impacts on this world as engineers, we know we must embrace our failures, learn from our mistakes, and fearlessly take on the next challenge. Thank you, everyone, for listening to us.
Very nice. Let's give them my hand. Thank you for representing Bellevue so well. Do you have anyone from your school with you that we can do the picture with as well?
I have Brandon.
All right, let's get Brandon. Okay. All right. Next, we have roll call. City Clerk?
Thank you. Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newmanhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmembers On.
Here.
Councilmember Lee, would you lead us in the flag salute?
May I speak? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And justice for all.
Okay. We have a proclamation and a commendation today. Deputy Mayor, would you please read the International Overdose Awareness Day proclamation?
Certainly, Mayor. Whereas International Overdose Awareness Day is a global event held on August 31st of each year to remember those gone too soon from overdose deaths. And whereas no community in Washington State is immune to accidental or intentional drug overdose deaths, which totaled more than 2,000 in 2021, an increase of more than 66% over the state's 2019 statistics. And whereas in Bellevue, overdose deaths continue to impact our community with 18 deaths in 2021 and nine so far in 2022. And whereas Bellevue police officers began carrying the anti-overdose drug Narcan in 2019 to reverse overdoses from every potent opioid such as fentanyl. And whereas addiction is a complex and treatable disease and a life of recovery is possible. And whereas the city of Bellevue is committed to raising awareness of drug overdoses as it continues to support local, county, and state efforts related to education, prevention, treatment, and recovery for substance abuse. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim August 31st, 2022, as International Overdose Awareness Day in Bellevue, encouraging residents to stand by the growing number of neighbors who have lost loved ones to an overdose or are battling a substance use disorder themselves. Signed, Lynn Robinson, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Next, we have a special commendation for a City of Bellevue employee who many of us here on the dais have known for some time and have interacted with over the years. It's James McLean. And our family worked with him for 14 years with our daughter, which wasn't easy. And, you know, just seeing that he was embodying equity, diversity, inclusion before we even knew what those words meant. Everybody got a part. Everybody had an opportunity. People learned to work with each other. People learned to appreciate, tolerate, embrace, support. And, you know, he did it all with love. And it wasn't easy. You know, you asked a lot of the kids. You asked a lot of the families. You had young kids, middle-aged kids, young adults, older adults. You had every type of person in your program with all different needs, different abilities. And when the curtains went up, none of that mattered. Everybody came together as a team. So I'm going to read a commendation, and I know that Councilmember Lee also has some special words he'd love to give to you. So I'm going to start with your commendation, and then we'll come do a picture. So whereas Community Services Supervisor James McLean began his career at the City of Bellevue in 1990, and whereas James recently retired from the City of Bellevue after 32 years of dedicated service, creating an award-winning youth theater program at the Bellevue Youth Theater. And whereas over the course of his career in Bellevue, James worked with three different parks and community services directors and many staff to positively impact the community. And whereas in his position at the Bellevue Youth Theater, James successfully collaborated with youth and adults in a unique, inclusive approach, ensuring Bellevue Theater is a place where everyone has a role. And whereas over the course of more than 100 shows, James effectively taught youth that they each have innate value and something to contribute. And whereas as a leader who championed diversity, equity, and inclusion, James ushered in an era of compassionate program innovation focused on removing barriers to participation for all. And whereas James has been a valued colleague to countless city staff and a mentor to employees and community members, both in Bellevue and beyond, his creativity and dedication working with the community will be remembered. Now therefore, I, Lynn Robinson, and on behalf of the Bellevue City Council, do this first day of August in the year 2022, hereby commend James McLean for his professionalism, dedication, and longstanding service to the Bellevue community. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. What can we say, right? You know, I could have probably spent hours talking about you, but as the mayor already said, very, you know, wonderful attributions to your contribution. So I would keep it as succinct as possible. You know, you have been working on behalf of all the young people of everywhere, not just City Bellevue, but from all the whole region. And not even just the young people, but their families. And as the mayor said, you know, not just because you are open to families of all kinds, all people, all abilities, you know, they all have a space, have a place in your play. And that's what you do. You dedicate your entire, over 30 years, you know, to this project. And I've been there for most of it, 29 of them probably. And I've known the families, you know, who are physically, mentally disabled, young kids who are shy, who are only a 2-, 3-year-old baby, and older youth, same way. But they all have a role in your play. They all have a role to play in your activities. And they never feel that they are not wanted, they are neglected. It's amazing. And the people who came in without saying any word, just sitting there and just be part of the play, they mature, they learn, they feel that it's safe. That's what we're all talking about when we talk about, you know, social equity, justice for, is you play, you give everybody a place that's safe. They feel comfortable. They feel they're wanted, they belong, and they are valued. And they can actually contribute as they go through their lives, you know, in your activities. And the proof is in the pudding. And many of the young people I know who are shy, who didn't do very much, who are on the street kids, they became engineers for Boeing Company. They become military soldiers overseas. And it's amazing what they learn from you. You know, they sit on the technology side, how to learn how to work on the lighting, setting, and all that stuff. So it's amazing what you've done. And we are sorry to see you go, but I'm sure the impact you have made, there are hundreds of them out there. They all know who had helped make what they are and what help you have given them, including me, including ourselves. So it's unique. I don't, I've been on the City Council for a while, I've been in a lot of cities. We are the only city that has such a program that offers this kind of impact opportunity. Thank you. Thank you, James.
Okay, let's do a picture really quick. Okay. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next up, we have oral communications. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. This evening, there are eight pre-registered speakers for oral communications. So if you bear with me, I have a couple of things to notify the public of. So first, pursuant to council rules, oral communications is allowed for a maximum of 30 minutes. Speakers are given up to three minutes to speak, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to one side of a particular topic. The unique thing about tonight is I need to point out that there are two public hearings on the council's agenda later tonight. The first public hearing is on the city's 2023 to 2024 budget and 23 to 29 capital improvement program plan. The second public hearing is on a potential land use code amendment eliminating the quasi-judicial appeals to the city council from hearing examiner decisions and recommendations on Process 1 and Process 3 land use appeals. Since the council will be holding public hearings as part of tonight's agenda, all comments to the council related to the budget or related to the land use code amendment should come under the public hearing portion of the agenda and not oral communications. If you have signed up incorrectly for oral communications, when I call your name, just please indicate that your comments are related to either the budget or the land use code amendment, and I'll remove your name from oral communications and place it under the public hearing. And the public hearings will be held for your information under items 9A and 9B. And with that, I'm going to call our first speaker for oral communications, which is Elizabeth Kronoff. And Ms. Kronoff is joining us virtually. Ms. Kronoff, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm a returned Peace Corps volunteer and aid worker turned analyst and techie, and I wrote a letter to the council earlier. I'd like to read selected pieces of that. I spent over a decade managing programs to improve the lives of people in developing and war-torn countries, and I still remember the sense of gratitude that used to wash over me every time I came home to visit my beautiful forested state after years and months and gray urban landscapes and dusty rundown villages. When I finally moved back to the Northwest, my family chose Bellevue because of the city's character as a city in a park. The balance between walkability and proximity to nature was a top reason that we, among many others, stretched our budgets, and I don't think we're alone. I'd like to share some of my experience in places like Russia, Afghanistan, Tanzania, among others. The first among them is I learned that trees around the world signify wealth and organization. Trees are for everyone. I don't mean that trees are this abstract symbol. From tiny villages to large cities, they represent the tangible result of specific actions that communities take to maintain their shade, their food, their fuel, and their quality of life. Leafy canopies mean that nobody has stolen the trees to sell as lumber. Fruit-bearing orchards mean that someone in the village was looking out to nurture an investment for years into the future. When you see trees in every little courtyard, you know that people are able to weather hard times depending on one another, and they don't have to cut down their trees for cash or cheap fuel. We in Bellevue are far more privileged than many of the people I work with around the world, but we still face the same economic pressures that people face worldwide, and we do see people cutting down trees. Everybody has their own compelling reason to cut just one tree or clear just one lot. So I'm asking the city council not just to adopt the Trees for Libability Plan, but to find ways to work with us, developers, and individuals to incentivize tree cover as a priority. Again, trees are for everyone, and I think we can find creative solutions to keep Bellevue's high quality of life for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kronoff. The next speaker on the list is David Toyer, who is also joining us virtually. Mr. Toyer, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Is this the appropriate time to speak to the last item on the agenda this evening?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Well, members of the council, thank you very much. David Toyer with Toyer Strategic Advisors. We're a land use and economic development consulting firm, and we're working with the Brackets who have a piece of property up in Cougar Mountain. It's in your potential annexation area and not in the city limits yet. They have joined with another parcel, or another owner of some parcels up there, and submitting a 10% petition for annexation for your consideration tonight. We urge you to support that annexation and allow us to move forward to the next phase, which would be gathering 60% petition signatures. Note in the staff report, staff has recommended that the council deny the requested 10% petition. We really would urge you to support it. Staff's main concern was time allocated to the annexation and their overall workload. Our company works on probably a half a dozen annexations every year up and down the I-5 corridor in counties and cities, and we've, you know, it's not something that is a day-to-day task that staff would have to work on. There are periods of time when there would be some work to get it through to the next step, but a lot of the burden is really on the petitioners in order to be able to circulate the petition, gather the information, provide necessary documentation, and so forth. And that's why the Brackets retained our firm, was to really help with that process. We really would encourage this. This is an opportunity for the city to fill out the rest of its UGA and annex the last piece of its potential annexation areas. And it's an opportunity for, at least in our particular case, the Brackets to have some certainty as to the availability of utilities to their property. Right now, they don't have that certainty, and neither does anybody else that's in this area. So we really would strongly request your consideration of accepting this 10% petition and moving the annexation forward. Without it, we'll be back, I'm sure, at other points in the future to look at other ways to try to address the ability to serve this area with utilities and provide some housing that's part of your overall ability as a city to, you know, put out there many different types of housing options for those that seek to live in Bellevue. Be happy to answer any questions you have this evening, but we would appreciate your support.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Heidi Dean, who again is joining us virtually. Ms. Dean, can you hear me? Ms. Dean?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Great. Thanks so much. Good evening, council. Mayor, coming to you from my parents' home, we wanted to touch on a couple of items on the agenda. First of all, I wanted to express strong support for Councilmember Robertson's ask in item 7B. I feel very uncomfortable with our police department being asked to act as essentially bounty hunters for other states who are chasing women seeking abortions. So yes, please support that ask. Item 12A, the Cougar Mountain property annexation, it really kills me because I don't want to say no to sister neighborhoods. But given what, given how stretched community development and development services have been, given everything that I've seen on the agenda and on the workload, you know, coming up with the Wilberton Vision, the comp plan update, everything, unless there's something urgent emergent about all of that, I would really encourage you to say no, not this year, but encourage those folks to come back in 2024 after the comp plan update has been completed. I just don't think there's time for it. And then, speaking of the comp plan update, with you guys are going into your August break, but during your August break, there are going to be two more of the deep dives for the public on the comp plan. And I have concern about who is providing input. You know, our comp plan update is supposed to reflect the input of those who reside in and/or own businesses here, operate businesses. But what I'm seeing online are political groups and special interest groups who are encouraging their members to take our surveys and attend our meetings and send in comments. And those groups include members who are not Bellevue residents or business owners. So it kind of feels like a repeat of the shelter siting process and the Newport Hills park planning process. And if you remember, those residents were bullied and our input was ignored to cater to special interest groups. Wilberton resident Phyllis White asked Ms. Brooke Broad from Community Development if there was a way to limit input only to residents or to at least tell where it's coming from. And Phyllis was told no. But, you know, the NEP process is able to limit input only to the residents of the targeted neighborhoods through mailers about meetings and voting only by mailed ballots. So I'm feeling like surely there's a way for community development to ensure that outsiders with agendas are not the people who are driving our comp plan update. And I would ask that council address that with Mr. Miyaki, Mr. Kaderman, and Mr. Kaderman's community development staff. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Marlene Meyer. And Ms. Meyer, I do not see you identified by name virtually. Are you here in the room with us? Okay, if you are online with us, could you use star 9 to raise your hand so I can identify you? Okay, I'm going to skip to the next speaker, who is Maya Kesselman. Ms. Kesselman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time begins now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak during the council meeting. So I would like to raise my voice in support of updating the city tree removal code. So as we all know, the city population is growing due to large companies expanding their presence in Bellevue. The traffic through the city streets is consistently increasing. Also, we have two major interstate highways coming through the city that are consistently congested, so the air pollution is increasing on one hand. On the other hand, we observed that a lot of older houses built in maybe 50s, 60s are replaced by larger houses. And what it usually results in is removal on the trees from a lot that was not allocated to support a bigger house. Usually, the cars would occupy like 80, 90% of the lot with a small area remaining, and it would be covered with either grass or small shrubs, or in the best-case scenario, the small trees will be planted over there. As we, that's like on one hand. On the other hand, we observed another thing that about 300 trees were removed from the 148th Avenue recently in support of Energize a site project. So these were mostly old growth trees that were planted a long time ago, and Energize and PSC promised to replace those with much smaller trees that should be shorter in height, et cetera. So as we know, the smaller trees, especially deciduous trees, don't clean the air as good as the old So it kind of feels like a repeat of the shelter siting process and the Newport Hills park planning process. And if you remember, those residents were bullied and our input was ignored to cater to special interest groups. Wilburton resident Phyllis White asked Ms. Brooke Broad from Community Development if there was a way to limit input only to residents or to at least tell where it's coming from, and Phyllis was told no. But, you know, the NEP process is able to limit input only to the residents of the targeted neighborhoods through mailers about meetings and voting only by mailed ballots. So I'm feeling like surely there's a way for community development to ensure that outsiders with agendas are not the people who are driving our comp plan update. And I would ask that council address that with Mr. Miyaki, Mr. Kaderman, and Mr. Kaderman's community development staff. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker on the list is Marlene Meyer. And Ms. Meyer, I do not see you identified by name virtually. Are you here in the room with us? Okay, if you are online with us, could you use star nine to raise your hand so I can identify you? Okay, I'm going to skip to the next speaker, who is Maya Kesselman. Ms. Kesselman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time begins now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak during the council meeting. So I would like to raise my voice in support of updating the city tree removal code. So as we all know, the city population is growing due to large companies expanding their presence in Bellevue. The traffic through the city streets is consistently increasing. Also, we have two major interstate highways coming through the city that are consistently congested, so the air pollution is increasing on one hand. On the other hand, we observed that a lot of older houses built in maybe 50s, 60s are replaced by larger houses. And what it usually results in is removal on the trees from a lot that is not, that was not allocated to support a bigger house. Usually, the cars would occupy like 80, 90% of the lot with a small area remaining, and it would be covered with either grass or small shrubs, or in the best-case scenario, the small trees will be planted over there. As we, that's like on one hand. On the other hand, we observed another thing that about 300 trees were removed from the 148th Avenue recently in support of Energize a site project. So these were mostly old growth trees that were planted long time ago, and Energize and PSC promised to replace those with much smaller trees that should be shorter in height, et cetera. So as we know, the smaller trees, especially deciduous trees, don't clean the air as good as the old growth evergreen conifers. So, and losing those 300 trees and observing consistent replacing older, smaller houses and older trees with smaller shrubs or smaller trees raises my concern that eventually our tree-like, park-like city will look more like, and like, bare lots covered with large houses, almost no trees remaining for shade, and with temperature in summers rising, people, animals, and even cars on the parking lots are looking for shade. And that's another reason why keeping old growth trees in place is kind of very, very important for the city, for people living in it, and for everybody coming to enjoy our city in summer or winter. So thank you so much and hope you'll support updating the tree removal code in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Hudson, who I believe is here in person.
Hi, I'm here tonight because I'm in my second child abuse lawsuit with the Bellevue School District. I'm speaking tonight specifically about the school-to-prison pipeline. I've identified some very concerning patterns and practices of documented child abuse of my daughter over the last 10 years. Chapter 2644 is the abuse statute for the state of Washington. The declarative purpose of that statute under 010, the child's interest is supposed to prevail over locus parenti. That would be the school district. We have documented child abuse for 10 years, staff and students. When we go to that same statute, a sequence to 030, teachers are 1A. I am 1D. I have tried to report and been obstructed by Bellevue Police Department in conspiracy with Bellevue School District. We have experienced, and I also want to point out, that the school-to-prison pipeline is a pipeline. It's a trafficking system of child abusing teachers, police officers, prosecutors, and even judges. I filed a criminal complaint, private prosecution, that had judicial misconduct. It did cite the conflict of interest of Bellevue School District, its police department, or Bellevue City Attorney's Office investigating itself. Furthermore, what is so disturbing is that when I went for an order of protection today, a judge told me that I didn't have the right to protect my daughter. My daughter is not the property of the Bellevue School District. I have a fundamental right under the 14th Amendment to protect my daughter, and she has a fundamental right to education, equal protection and due process. What you guys are doing in violation of 2644060, where it says immunity from civil or criminal liability, you guys are preventing prosecutions of teachers by, at Bellevue Police Department. You are further, where it says does not apply to a person who caused or allowed child abuse or neglect to occur. With documentation of explicit abuse, I even have an email with Stephen Mylett, the former chief of police, to Brad Miyaki, saying to ignore the child abuse and endangerment, medical neglect, traumatic brain injury. My daughter is so afraid she's agoraphobic, okay? She can't even go to school. But being exploited and trafficked in school because the other thing, there are attorney-client frauds occurring, there are frauds on my daughter's educational services, there are a lot of criminal activities that I actually am going tomorrow to report to the FBI. At no point in time should a kid be trafficked by a school district.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. From the list is Alex Zimmerman.
Did the FBI five times, never working. He's a mafia. Stop them Nazi fascist mass bandito. I speak right now to everybody who listen to me. Tomorrow election, we need bring America back to normal. Stop this fascism what has got bigger and bigger every day. I give you classic example right now, what is show, how Democrat acting like a dirty garbage rats with Nazi Gestapo principle. I know this. Come to meeting more than 3,000 times for many years. So Sound Transit last Tuesday give me trespass for 90 days. Who involved in this trespass? Council Balducci. Consul in country, Council Balducci interrupt me in every meeting with very aggressive interruption. So I think in she right now, I told you before, probably mentally sick after COVID. But this not one point, another point, support by another chair of Sound Transit, Auburn Mayor, you know what it means? I will talk to them, to them too, next week. And number three is another chair is a black man, university, university place council. Guys, I have a many trespasses. It's not a point. Point is everything start looking idiotic because it got deeper and deeper. So what's happened? Almost 10 years ago, Seattle Council stopped Constitution, opened Public Meeting Act, and did something what is everybody publicly talk Alex Zimmerman rules. Next year, King Country accept this too. Next year, Sound Transit accept too. Guys, my question to everybody, go tomorrow to election, they don't vote for Democrat because they are pure bandito and psychopath. Alex Zimmerman rule, one man change rules for all King Country.
We don't do political brand standing here at public comment, so you can continue to speak about your topic, but not about your campaign.
I don't keep about campaign. I talk about everybody. I don't have campaign. I have nine campaign, nobody vote for me. I'm not care about this. So situation very simple right now. Thank you for your correction. This exactly. You changed from five minutes to three minutes few years ago only because me. I speak right now to everybody, guys, Democrat is a mafia, a bandito. They bring us to war. This will, World War III start right now. Only question where is we come to atomic bomb? You know what it means? And destroy America totally. Stand up, Americans. Stop vote for Democrat mafia. Thank you very much.
The next speaker on the list is Suzanne LeBeuf. Ms. LeBeuf, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, your time begins now.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. My name is Suzanne LeBeuf. I'm going to speak this really fast. I live in Wilburton. I have worked as a mental health clinician, a university instructor, teaching human services courses, and chemical dependency counselor. My comments are about, excuse me, homelessness and drug addiction. I agree that providing less expensive forms of sheltering initially for the unhoused, such as safe parking programs or high-grade tents in a designated area, for example, could be the start of a long process of truly helping people who are chronically homeless. Recovery takes time. I suggest possibly creating an initial staging site where people are allowed to park their cars and live in high-quality tents. Providing showers, laundry, and toilet facilities would meet the basic hygienic needs of human beings. These initial staging sites could provide intensive medical and case management services, for example, as well as working with residents on their goals. They could be in a graduated step program with inducements of better housing toward the end of their signed agreements. Initially, getting off drugs is challenging, so I envision harm reduction as being an initial step in treatment, but not used over a specific limited amount of time under a doctor's supervision. Harm reduction by itself continues the addictive process so that people become even more addicted over time. Continued harm reduction is the path of a slow and painful suicide. Harm reduction does not help addicted people. Addictions do not go away by the continued use of drugs. I'm an advocate of longer and more intensive drug treatment programs. A more informed leadership should know that addictions increase the longer that drugs are used. Housing first is a problematic policy. Low-barrier housing should be reserved as a reward for people who have graduated from participation in long-informed, well-supported individual processes utilizing treatment and care agreements. They should be able to look forward to better housing as a reward for their work and should not have to fend off the influence of drug use around their dwellings. Let's take care of people and their chronic homeless problems. Otherwise, we aren't solving the problem. We are housing people in a chaotic and low-barrier hotel where drug use and chronic mental illness continues and is not properly treated. Don't give people a choice to keep using and stay untreated. They should be designated as gravely disabled and treated as such. Low-barrier shelter, sheltering will only enable the chronically ill lifestyles and associated crimes to continue that resulted in their chronic homelessness in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. And that leaves us at the end of our pre-registered list. At this point, I would ask if there is anyone here with us in council chambers tonight who would like to make oral communication to the council, please raise your hand. In addition, if there's anyone joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand function or star nine if you're connected with a phone. Ms. Betsy Hummer?
Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, council members. I am really happy to see the police use of force on your agenda tonight. I briefly read over the agenda memo, and I am very gratified to see that the people in Bellevue who especially participated in the outreach are, love their police department, want to see it not defunded, want to see it maintained, and also they support their police and they support the activities that the police are doing. Recently, on Nextdoor, there have been reports of assaults in Victoria and up at, over Lake Fred Meyer. And a couple weeks ago, we heard from the police saying that they are addressing those concerns, and I'm very happy to hear about that. I'm glad that you did the police use of force, and as a participant in the police community advisory councils, I get to see firsthand the training that they go through, and I also took the self-defense class and just the stuff that they encounter that we don't encounter on a regular basis. So thanks for the police use of force report, and I appreciate the support of our police throughout the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hummer. That is the end, and I do not see any additional hands, Mayor, so that would close oral communications.
Okay, thank you. We have two items under Council Business and New Initiatives. First of all, Deputy Mayor, you were asking for an excused absence for our September the 6th meeting. Councilmember Lee, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move to excuse Deputy Mayor Newenhouse from the September 6, 2022 City Council Regular Meeting.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Next up is an initiative from Councilmember Robertson. Would you like to go ahead and present this for us?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So as we all know, and we talked about in this chamber, the Dobbs decision overturned Roe versus Wade, and I've been thinking a lot about this. And one of the things I did was I read state law, which was originally passed in the Initiative 120, and I was reading RCW 902120, and it includes the following language. The state shall not penalize, prosecute, or otherwise take adverse action against an individual based on their actual potential perceived or alleged pregnancy outcomes, nor shall the state penalize, prosecute, or otherwise take adverse action against someone for aiding or assisting a pregnant individual in exercising their right to reproductive freedom with their voluntary consent. So Washington laws, it is today, protects both women who are seeking reproductive choices of abortion, as well as those that will aid her in her, in her action, as well as doctors. And yet, with the overturning of Roe versus Wade, some states are criminalizing that behavior. And those states can ask our police department to extradite people to serve subpoenas, to help with investigations of people that they want to prosecute in their state, which is directly contrary to RCW 902, Chapter 902. So I was thinking about this, and I talked to the city attorney's office about what it would take to adopt a policy here in Bellevue to make sure that we do not use any of our public resources, including our law enforcement officers, to aid other states in criminal prosecutions for things that are legal in Washington, AKA abortion. So I have talked to the city attorney's office. We brought this forward for the eight-hour rule. I forgot to put in my memo, but this can be done, and you can ask staff to confirm this. This can be done in existing resources without impacting any other projects. So what I propose is that we allow the city attorney's office to do the research on how we can adopt such a policy legally under state and federal law, and to bring that back as a policy in the future. So if there's, I'm happy to answer any questions for my colleagues, but otherwise, I'm happy just to make the motion.
So you're asking staff to do research and come back with a recommended?
Course of action.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? I think it's a great idea, and I appreciate your initiative on this. So all those in favor? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
I really appreciate Councilmember Robertson's passion and interest in this issue. And I think that this is an issue that's very personal, individual, moral, and I think that's great. And I think we all have our own, you know, feeling about it. And I think the city of Bellevue has always behaved very rationally, very well in many of these. This is not the unique issue. I assume we have many other legal issues that affect the federal legislation, local legislation, all that stuff. And every state may have also different, you know, enforcement issues. And the thing I am concerned about, you know, taking this on, is because I'm not sure whether it's a local issue at our level to make a policy decision. Because of the very politically divisive and charged environment we are talking about, I think it may not be the appropriate thing to do as a policy for the city.
May I ask you a question?
So, yeah.
Would you be interested in hearing what staff's idea is before you would vote yes or no on that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, again.
So this is a vote to have staff come back
Right, right.
with their research and recommendation?
I believe they should be able to do it within less than eight hours, you know?
Okay.
Does it take that? Then we can act to.
Well, this is a request that council member, that what's on the table is that staff can take more than eight hours, so you can vote for or against it.
Okay, all right. My thought is that because it's a political environment, which it shouldn't be here, but unfortunately
Would you like to amend the motion?
We're looking at the national Supreme Court's getting into it, Congress getting into
Would you like to amend the motion to read something else?
I would like to say that we reinforce the city of Bellevue's policy, given the police department, but authority discretion, that they, they are not going to, how would I put it? To use that discretion, which is what we are comfortable, and we, as a council, we can act. If they don't do it, we say, hey, you know, we don't agree with the way you, you, you act.
I'm going to let Councilmember Robertson respond to you.
Certainly. So, Councilmember Lee, I understand, and certainly we have no authority over state or federal law on abortion. The issue, as I see it, is that our state law says that the state, which includes the city, shall take no action to, or adverse action against folks for having abortions or for aiding someone in having an abortion. Yet, under the federal extradition laws, they could, in fact, be forced to extradite someone to another state. in fact be forced to extradite someone to another state. So the best example I have is if someone comes from Idaho to seek abortion care in a Washington doctor, and that Washington doctor prescribes the an abortion pill to that person, that person picks up a prescription, doesn't take it in Washington, goes home to Idaho. If Idaho criminalizes that, then that Idaho could try to extradite the doctor and prosecute the doctor, even though they have a defense under Washington law, and it's perfectly legal under Washington law. I, we are in a bit of a pickle, and I don't want to put our law enforcement officers in the position of trying to pick which law they're going to enforce. So, and I furthermore do not want to see any taxpayer dollar in Bellevue being used contrary to state law to help, unless they're required, under state or federal law, to investigate or prosecute that doctor. So that's where I feel that we do have a role, because we do set the budget for the city of Bellevue, and we do set policy for the city of Bellevue. And so if the city attorney's office can can do the research and recommend a policy that is legal under both state and federal law, where we can give direction on it, I would like to give them the latitude to do so. It may not take them eight hours, but we're about to go into a long August break, so I'd rather give them the authority to do the work now and and bring us a policy in the fall. So, and thank you for considering my perspective.
Can I ask for a follow-up question, then I'll be satisfied. You know, I think we have situations similar to maybe this, or maybe not. I'm not a lawyer. We have the illegal immigrant situation, when people who are supposed to be illegal, according to, I guess, according to federal law, they can be extradited, right? Or they can be held.
By ICE, yes.
But we don't, we never enforce it here in the city of Bellevue. Our police never go out and say, oh, you look like an illegal immigrant. I check your paper, and if we find you as lacking in paper, you're in trouble. I don't think we do that as a rule. I mean, as a rule, we can't say it's a rule.
It's true. The difference is...
That's why I was, what's the difference?
The difference is, is that there's no federal law against abortion. It's up to the states, and immigration law is federal, and mostly we do not inquire. That's the difference. So making a policy, I'm hoping, on this is different, because it's state-to-state laws.
Well, while we do it under this particular situation, if it's not even federal law requiring...
But we have a state law that protects people and says we can take no adverse action against them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good explanation, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have the motion on the table, and we've heard Councilmember Lee's thoughts. Does anybody else want to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I just strongly support the council members' proposal, and this is to have this looked into by the staff. It may take more than eight hours, but I agree with the concept behind it, but we're just at this point, having the staff do the work to come back to us and give, talk to us about the feasibility of this and whether we can do it. And I think that's an appropriate thing to do, and it's certainly within our legal rights to do that.
Okay. Councilmembers on?
Yeah, I support this as well, and my sense is it probably won't take more than eight hours, because I understand that there's other local agencies that actually has taken the same step and might have done some of the legal work already related to this. If it does take more than eight hours, I support that as well. So I would just want to confirm, this would be, if with our vote, it would be the amount of time our staff needs to review, even if it's over eight hours. Is that correct?
Correct. Thank you. Okay. Don't see any other hands up, so with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will abstain.
You'll abstain.
Thank you.
And abstention is counted in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve that?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. So we have two public hearings tonight. Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce the first one?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, council members. The first of the public hearing is the second of three budget public hearings on the 2023 to 2024 operating budget and the 2023 to 2029 capital plan. These public hearings, as you know, are an opportunity for residents and other stakeholders to provide input to the budget update, including offsets, levies, taxes, fees, and rates. So joining us this evening for a brief staff report is Evan Phillips, our Budget Manager with the Finance and Asset Management Department. That'll turn over to you, Evan.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Miyaki, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, council members. Before we open up the council, sorry, the public hearing, I do want to take a moment to reorient us with the council milestone calendar. So myself and Directors Tony Call and Michael Shiosaki came before you on March 7th for the Budget Workshop, where we discussed a whole host of issues related to the 2324 budget, as well as the 2023-2029 CIP. Those, that discussion include a conversation about inflationary pressures, the financial outlook of the city, among other topics, including long-range capital planning for our parks and community services. A couple of months later, we had our initial public hearing, the first of three, and obviously tonight, we are having our second public hearing. The next time the 2023-2024 budget will be before all of you will be in late September, when City Manager Miyaki transmits his preliminary budget to you all for your review and deliberation. That transmittal will kick off a two-month process where we will go through various staff presentations and considerations, and within that two-month period, we will also hold the third and final public hearing. We anticipate that to be sometime in October or early November, in advance of a tentative adoption date of November 21st. And just as offense poster, assign posts for all of you, that November 21st date is the Monday before Thanksgiving, so I just want to call that out for you all as well. There we go. And since the point of tonight is for public engagement, I did want to take a moment to highlight the other public engagement opportunities that are part of the 2324 budget process. So I do want to call out that we have a public involvement website that always has the latest and greatest information, and please share that with any folks who are asking. We've also gone out and received feedback in our budget performance and business surveys, and of course, we have our three public hearings throughout the process. Of course, public comment is always welcome at council meetings and other venues, or folks can submit their written comments via email to council or fam staff, such as myself, at the emails provided. And finally, there is another opportunity or opportunities with boards and commissions, whether you're interested in utility rates or community services spending or human services spending. Those are opportunities throughout the late summer and early fall to get involved in the budget process in a different way. So with those opportunities outlined, Mayor, I pass it back to you to conduct the public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So as you said, this is for the public comments, not for council discussion. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are 12 speakers for the public hearing, but before we get started calling names, I just wanted to note for the council and the public that notice of this public public hearing was published on both July 18th and July 25th. Notice directed any written comments to be provided to the City Clerk or the city's budget manager, Mr. Phillips. And in the desk packet this evening, as a response to that, there were 10 comments received in writing and are included in your desk packet. So with that, I'll call the first speaker, and that is Barbara Braun. And Ms. Braun, I see you virtually. Can you hear me?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, hold on one sec. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and city leaders. I urge you to begin to fully fund the environmental stewardship plan implementation, starting in the 2324 biennium budget. By now, the climate emergency is well-understood and globally accepted. The federal government is finally poised to take action. Our state government has already started action. In 2014, the city of Bellevue committed to a 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030, and renewed that commitment in 2019. To date, insufficient resources have been allocated to fully implement the plan or to truly achieve the targets. The pace of progress is unacceptably so, and it is not consistent with the city's aspirational or statutory goals. Because it takes several years for the most effective emissions-cutting measures to have their desired effect, this budget cycle is critical to reaching Bellevue's commitments. The action the city does or does not take in the next two years will make or break the ability to lower community-wide emissions by 50% by 2030. A sizable boost in resources in this biennium budget is needed to put Bellevue on the pathway to success. In 2020, People for Climate Action compiled research on five U.S. cities of Bellevue's size, which have been significantly cutting their emissions. It showed successful cities have four to six times the dedicated staff in their sustainability departments than Bellevue has. To catch up, the city of Bellevue must add six to 10 dedicated FTEs for our environmental stewardship staff in 2023, and aggressively focus on reducing emissions from all buildings and all transportation sources. We are grateful the city is hearing residents' concerns about trees. Trees are important and provide many benefits, such as cooling, carbon sequestration, and quality of life. Unfortunately, while trees sequester carbon, they don't reduce greenhouse gas emissions. We must do both, reduce emissions and sequester carbon. Given how much the city is charging ahead with development, this is the one key focus that residents need from their city government to assure our future. We need this more than anything else. This is a basic human requirement. We can afford it. Since the city recently approved 12 new staff positions for building permits, and is planning several other nice-to-have, non-critical expenditures, we have full confidence that in a $1.7 billion budget, prudent budget-balancing measures can be found to accommodate a small boost in the city's environmental stewardship efforts. We asked the city to increase environmental stewardship spending by $2 million per year this biennium, and to follow up by directing city leadership to rapidly ramp up hiring and actions that will put us on a path to the 50% cut in emissions by 2030. Thank you.
The next speaker is Paul Bruno.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, City Council Members, City Manager Miyaki, city staff. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Paul Bruno, and I'm a Bellevue resident and very concerned about climate change. And also, as a member of the People for Climate Action group, we've shared with you in the past a chart showing five other cities comparable in size to Bellevue, and what they've done with their budget in essentially lowering greenhouse gases substantially by having more human resources involved with their environmental program. You should have a copy of this in front of you, and I know you've seen it before. Those cities, nearly all of which have smaller budgets per capita than Bellevue, are all apportioning at least four times as much budget toward sustainability work than Bellevue is. Those same five U.S. cities have approximately four, and in some cases, nine times as many dedicated full-time employees as Bellevue does. So this demonstrates convincingly that to have effective sustainability programs, Bellevue needs to add at least six full-time staff dedicated to sustainability work, not necessarily all at one time, but over a period of the next few years. PCA has also shared with you a draft outline of the possible responsibilities that that dedicated staff could do for Bellevue. And let me just say this, it's not to take away from the army of two that you already have working on the plan, but they, I believe, need more help. While Bellevue also says they already have folks working on sustainability matters in many departments, that's good news, but in some cases, it distracts from the need to have more of the FTEs focused solely on sustainability. Those five other cities have, that we've shared the research with you, have staffing in other departments, but at the same time, they've reported more full-time, dedicated sustainability staff than Bellevue. So tonight, we urgently ask that the staff and the council find this essential additional budget that will be needed to bring on this staff. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is April Stevens.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is April Stevens, and I am a resident of Bellevue. In June, before the council and the city staff went on retreat, I addressed this body to implore you to keep the need for additional staff in order to better implement the environmental stewardship plan top on your priorities. Since that time, the average June temperatures across the contiguous United States was 2.2 degrees higher than average. Above-average warmth dominated much of the nation that month. Even here, in our lovely Pacific Northwest, we know that air conditioning has become more critical than it ever has before. Also, despite below-average precipitation nationwide, some states saw a rather wet month. New Mexico, Washington State, and Oregon had some of their wettest records in June. June also saw large wildfires burning across portions of the South and Southwest, as many others grew rapidly in Alaska. One million acres burned in Alaska by June 18th, the earliest such occurrence in the calendar year in the last 32 years. Across all 50 states, more than 3.9 million acres have burned since January, which is nearly 2.3 times the average for this time of year. We know what wildfires in our neighboring areas do for our air quality, whether it's from eastern Washington or Canada, or even as far away as California. Also, since January, there have been nine individual billion-dollar weather and climate events across the United States. So these weather events are very expensive, and granted, these that I've brought up have occurred outside of the state of Washington by large, and also our city of Bellevue, but it's only a matter of time. The federal government has finally approached passing a milestone climate bill, and we know our state government also has taken action. We also realize that cities control, it's the individual cities that control and then contribute to the greenhouse gas emissions, so we have to do our part. Because it will take several years for the most effective emissions-cutting measures to have the desired effect, this budget cycle is critical to reaching Bellevue's commitments. The actions the city does or does not do in the next two years will make or break the ability to lower community-wide emissions 50% by 2030. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kylie Schulman. Ms. Schulman, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Kylie Schulman, and I live in Bellevue. I'm 15 years old and an upcoming sophomore at Newport High School. I care about climate change, since it is impacting every aspect of our lives as we live in this changing world every day. Climate change is an ongoing issue that can only be fixed with our decisive action. I work towards sustainability by working with organizations like the Sustainability Ambassadors to help rapidly advance the sustainable future. Thank you for your support with the environmental stewardship projects that launched recently, including the heat pump campaign to help residents learn about saving energy and money in their homes, and Sustainable Bellevue Climate Challenge Portal that was recently launched. As outlined in the environmental stewardship plan, we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions 50% by 2030. In 2021, Bellevue spent only a fraction of what's needed to implement the environmental stewardship plan. Full funding for this plan is essential for achieving our agreed-upon climate goals, as well as supporting the fight to make sustainability equitable. The city needs to work towards lowering energy costs, implementing easier and more accessible ways to move around the city, and ensuring cleaner air for people with health conditions like asthma. This work is complex and requires enough staff. I appreciate our current staff, who are... I appreciate our current staff who are working as quickly as possible, and it is still important to note that we need more staff for working on shorter-term actions along with longer-term actions. Bellevue needs to have proper funding for these staffing plans to be carried out. A livable climate is essential to our future, and the situation will only get worse if we do not act now. We need to take action on our climate as quickly as possible. Please help as much as you can to fully fund the Environmental Stewardship Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Curtis Allred. Mr. Allred, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Curtis Allred. I'm a Bellevue resident, and I'm very interested in Bellevue's action on environmental stewardship. I've been following the development of the Environmental Stewardship Plan and working with People for Climate Action, so I'm very in tune with what they're doing. And I would basically just like to echo what a lot of other speakers have said about in support of increasing the budget for environmental stewardship. I think that Bellevue has a great start with the Environmental Stewardship Plan. I just think that we need to up the staffing and put more money into the implementation of it now, now that it's been -- the plan has been established. I think it needs a lot more funding to actually successfully implement it and reach the greenhouse gas emission goals that the city has set for 2030. And so I'd like to see Bellevue step up and commit the budget and resources similar to those other five cities that the People for Climate Action studied, who have made a significant commitment to combating climate change. And I just want to thank you for putting resources behind that plan, and I hope that we can see a lot of resources applied to it to actually implement it in the future years. So thank you very much, and good luck.
Thank you. The next speaker is Don Marsh.
Good evening. My name is Don Marsh, and I would like to add my voice in support of more specific budgetary focus on Bellevue's environmental stewardship goals, including additional full-time staff positions to ensure these goals are met. This is important not only for the health and security of our children and grandchildren, but also to protect the beautiful and abundant species that will enhance their quality of life. This is doubly important because the Puget Sound region, and Bellevue in particular, is recognized for our leading high-tech companies, our academic achievement, and our strong environmental ethic. Our country and our world need good examples of leadership in all these areas, and Bellevue can provide inspiration and ideas that can be emulated by others. I support the good work and the recommendations you've received from People for Climate Action. As a co-founder of the nonprofit group 300 Trees and as a board member of Trees for Livability, my recent focus has been on trees. We are happy that the city is sponsoring tree giveaway events and will soon be strengthening our tree protection codes. We are relieved that the latest tree canopy survey shows our average canopy coverage is not falling. However, we are concerned that significant differences exist in the canopy coverage of different neighborhoods. Some neighborhoods do not have much coverage, and a survey by King County shows these neighborhoods can be up to 15 degrees hotter than nearby neighborhoods with more trees. People for Climate Action points out that Bellevue can't achieve its environmental goals with trees alone, and that is true. However, trees reduce atmospheric carbon in two ways. As most people know, trees store carbon in their trunks and branches, but trees also cool our neighborhoods by providing shade and evaporative cooling. That in turn reduces the amount of energy needed to run air conditioners, and that is the second way that trees reduce overall emissions. Trees provide beauty and health to our communities, act as a visible symbol of our commitment to the environment, and provide habitat for native birds and animals. When you formulate the biennium budget, please be sure that trees are an integral part of the plan so that future generations will continue to enjoy our city in a park. And I'll just add my final seconds here. I just returned from Kenya just a couple of hours ago and trying to get back into the time zone, but we witnessed some very stark impacts of climate change on that country. It made me aware that Bellevue is just barely, barely feeling the impacts of climate change. So we have the luxury of taking action where other parts of the world are not so fortunate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Putter Burt.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and Bellevue City Council. I was honored to start my day this morning, meeting with Congressman Adam Smith at PNB here in Bellevue, and I'm privileged to end my day with you. Thank you. My name is Putter Burt, and tonight I come before you with two hats on: as the CEO and President of Kids Quest Children's Museum, and as the Co-Chair of the Eastside Cultural Coalition that held its first meeting on March 13, 2020, the day that most arts organizations and cultural and science organizations closed their door to the public but did not stop their work. We are here tonight to ask you for your support in increasing funding and other resources to the Arts Budget Line and to these organizations who have seen their budgets reduced their ability to serve the community they love because they can't afford to work, do the work, or hire staff. That being said, we are not here to ask you to bail us out. We took copious notes over the last two and a half years, and I can speak on behalf of Kids Quest. We are a completely different organization today. We are smarter, we are stronger, we're just smaller. You all may think that we are a place just to play, but play is the vehicle that we use to teach children and their caregivers how to maneuver through the world. It is our job to give kids the tools to learn and think creatively and critically. Play is just the way. We will continue to take online reservations and to keep our numbers closer to 60% capacity because it makes for a better visit for everyone. Our ability to go out to the community schools, camps, and other nonprofits and social service agencies is considerably less for all the right precautions. We served 250,000 people before the pandemic, and now we serve closer to 150,000. Life is different now. People have stopped laughing at me when I say I won't really understand my budget like I used to until 2025. What I do know is the Budget Line for Supporting Arts and Culture in our Community has not increased since 2000. It is 2022 now. We want to partner with you to bring the best programming, exhibits, performances, and experiences any city can have. All of these organizations are not just nice-to-have, but they are necessary. And as you know, I submitted a letter from over 150 organizations that are part of Eastside Cultural Coalition in support of asking for larger Budget Line for Arts and Culture. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Court Olson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, Deputy Mayor, City Staff. You all know me. Dressed up tonight, though, because I thought I'd try to create the image that you all create when you sit there on the desk. And City Staff creates a similar image. It's important business that the city does, so to emphasize that I'm a businessman too, I wore my suit tonight. First time, I think I've worn it in about two or three years, but anyway. My bowtie indicates that I'm here on other business than my consulting business. I'm here representing a large group of folks that we call People for Climate Action, and we've got probably a little over 180 folks that signed a couple of recent letters to you, so you know what we're all about. What you may not realize is that there are a lot of other people besides the few of us that are in that organization who care a lot about the climate, and that number seems to be increasing according to polls that have been taken. I just want to add to everything that's been said tonight by saying history speaks and tells us a lot of things. We really appreciate the history of you all signing the renewed commitment to cut greenhouse gas emissions back in 2019. And we appreciate that you got an Environmental Stewardship Plan launched in late 2020 to work on that commitment. We're a little bit disappointed that we haven't done as much as we probably could have in the last two years, and as our flood of information has told you, there is a lot more that needs to be done, and we have to do it rather quickly, and that means we have to add a lot of resources, as people who've come before me tonight have said. So we'd like to see a history change, and the city step up to create the kind of history we need to get us to that 2030 date, when history will tell whether or not the city's commitment is worth its words. So please reflect on that as you develop a budget for the next biennium, because as others have said tonight, it's make-or-break time. You can't do it in less than eight years after this next budget cycle. Thanks for the time tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker is Benny Royce Royan.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenheath, and also the distinguished members of this council. My name is Benny Royce Royan. I co-chair the Eastside Cultural Coalition with Putter Burt. I'm also the producing artistic director of Benny Royce Dance, a project-based contemporary dance company that inspires, educates, and uplifts diverse communities through performances, education, and community events. March 13, 2020 shook the cultural sector in unprecedented ways. Like many, we were forced to close our doors, pivot multiple times to stay connected with communities we serve, and keep our organizations afloat. For arts, culture, heritage, science, and preservation organizations of varying sizes, budgets, and missions on the East Side, ECC became an essential place to get support, share resources, and hold space for each other. COVID-19 exposed the rawness of the challenges many cultural leaders and organizations face during this difficult time. Over the past two years, over 150 cultural leaders met over Zoom consistently. Organizations like PNB, Maidenbauer Center, Village Theaters, Santo Corchula Mexicano, American Ballet Theater, 91.3 KBCS at Bellevue College, Lake Washington Symphony Orchestra, Friends of Issaquah Samhain Hattery, and many more banded together to create an open, safe, and honest place for us to deal with COVID-19. During this time, we learned so much about each other's challenges and struggles, but we also celebrated the generosity, camaraderie, and incredible work happening throughout the East Side. While our doors were temporarily closed, we acted fast to create digital programming online to keep our families and youth singing, laughing, playing, and dancing in their homes. We persevered. I would be lying to you if I told you that we are all okay now. We are not. We continue to experience staff and budget cuts, reduced donor giving, and COVID PTSD. Oh, yes, it's real. We have not fully recovered. I stand before you here today as a member of the ECC and a cultural leader to ask for your continued support and more funding for the arts and culture on the East Side. It is crucial that we receive more support from the city of Bellevue to allow us to recover, scale up, and do more for our communities in a way that is equitable and gives us the opportunity to expand our capacity, reach, and impact. As a wealthy and progressive city, Bellevue continues to grow, yet the budget for supporting the arts remains unchanged. Also, we still lack arts and cultural facilities to bring people together or house our growing population of artists and cultural workers. I implore the city of Bellevue to take this opportunity and take the lead in demonstrating that communities thrive when more resources, funding, and overall support are directed to arts and culture. Lastly, I invite you to connect, play, and engage with us. Help us shape what the future looks like through increased funding. Let's show our constituents that the city of Bellevue centers their well-being through a fully funded and thriving arts and culture sector. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jennifer Keller, who's joining us virtually. Ms. Keller, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, your time begins now.
Yeah, my name is Jennifer Keller, and I live at 115 146 Avenue Southeast in Bellevue. And good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, and Council Members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to urge you to allocate sufficient funding in the budget for implementing climate action in the Environmental Stewardship Plan. I love the beauty of the Northwest, and I'm very concerned about our young people and their future in a time of climate change. The decisions we make now will have profound effects on their lives. I'm grateful for your past work on the Environmental Stewardship Plan and for projects such as the Heat Pump Campaign, but we need to do more. The level of implementation of the plan that has happened so far will only make an incremental reduction in our emissions. We need more funding and more staffing for environmental stewardship. We have our urgent city goal: 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2030, and we saw the urgency of that goal all around us this past week when the temperatures soared day after day. The urgency is also a key point in the latest report from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. Therefore, I urge you to prioritize spending and staffing for environmental stewardship and climate action in the budget. We currently have good staff, and they work hard, but we need more resources and staff to do this absolutely essential work. This is made clear by the research of PCA Bellevue, which has compiled information on those five U.S. cities roughly the same size as Bellevue. Those cities have made significant reductions in their carbon emissions, and they have more dedicated staff in their sustainability departments than Bellevue has. So we need to increase our staff. Using the staffing levels of those cities as an indicator, the city of Bellevue should add at least six more staff positions. More is better, dedicated to sustainability, to make substantial progress on our environmental stewardship work in 2023 and beyond. This is the time to do it, when we can still make a difference for our young people. I'm sure we can work it into the budget if we make it a serious priority. We must move very rapidly on taking climate action. Please do everything you can to fully fund the implementation of the Environmental Stewardship Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christopher Randles. Mr. Randles, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
All right. Let me just get set up here. Awesome. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newenhouse, Council Members, and City Manager Miyake. Chris Randles, representing Complete Streets Bellevue, an organization working to make sure everyone can get around safely and sustainably throughout the city. I just want to thank this council for understanding that city budgets at their fundamental level are a reflection of our values and of what our city chooses to prioritize. Our city's residents, including several here this evening who have testified, and others that our organization represents, have repeatedly shown they value sustainability, equity, safety, and accessibility for all of our residents. And this budget cycle represents an exciting opportunity to translate those values into real, tangible actions that will have impacts on all of Bellevue. Two years ago, this council showed great leadership by approving a budget with a significant amount of funding in the capital improvement program to support Vision Zero efforts in the city. We want to acknowledge Councilmember Zahn's amendment from back then, which fast-tracked the funding during the first two years of the seven-year CIP, which has enabled transportation staff to do some great work over the last two years, such as the road safety assessments near school zones project. This project will lead to tangible improvements that will make it safer for our city's kids to walk, bike, and roll to school, and this is quite frankly amazing. However, the scale of the safety crisis we're in necessitates further action. According to transportation staff's information, Bellevue is unfortunately trending in the wrong direction and will not meet our own goal of zero deaths and serious injuries on our streets by 2030. In addition to safety, 2030 is also an important year for climate, as many others have said this evening. As others noted, we need to reduce our emissions significantly by that time if we have any chance of avoiding the worst effects of climate change, some of which we just experienced this past week with our region's longest stretch of days overnight. this past week with our region's longest stretch of days over 90 degrees. With studies showing the production of batteries for electric automobiles still leaves a significant greenhouse gas emissions during their manufacturing process, our city will not be able to solely rely on widespread vehicle electrification to meet our climate goals in the transportation sector. We will need to support development patterns and transportation infrastructure that will enable more people who may currently exclusively drive to make more of their trips while walking, biking, and taking transit. However, they will need infrastructure in the community that can support these trips in a safe way that's accessible to people of all ages and abilities. That is why our organization strongly encourages council to significantly increase the funding allocations towards Vision Zero, bicycle and pedestrian improvement projects, and transit efficiency improvements. As much progress has been made in these areas, we know that Bellevue still has a long way to go. But through your bold action, we can realize the vision of what our city aspires to be, one that is sustainable, one that is equitable, and one that is accessible to all, no matter how they get around. Thank you.
Thank you. The final speaker on our list is Chris Marx, I believe, is joining us in person.
Thank you. Good evening, all of you. I'm Chris Marx. Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you directly about our environmental service plan and urge you to greatly expand those resources in the next biennium budget. You know, I rarely hear someone deny the existence of climate change anymore. When someone talks about floods in Kentucky, or melting rail lines in London, or wildfires that might consume the oldest trees in Yosemite, they freely conclude that climate change is real. And according to the Yale Climate Opinion Maps in 2022, 82% of the folks in our federal legislative district believe in climate change. Those folks are probably all doing something they hope will change the course of climate events, some recycle, some compost, some gave up meat, some take public transit, some bought an EV, and some put up solar panels. But what they don't know or fully understand is that Bellevue, as part of a King County climate action plan, is committed to cutting greenhouse gas emissions by 50% from the 2014 levels by 2030. And even if they know those words, they don't know what it means. They don't know what it will take, and they don't know who or how it will get done. The city's environmental stewardship dashboard doesn't link city-promoted actions with reduction goals. We know that existing buildings are producing half our current greenhouse gas emissions. That's a lot of homes those 82% of Bellevue residents live in. They are a critical part of the fix. Not only do they need to vote for good climate legislation and leaders, they need to do their part. And arguably, they would be part of a solution if they were engaged in the problem. So how do we make the citizens of Bellevue know that the city is committed to mitigating this crisis? Well, first, they need to know that our city government recognizes the crisis, understands the crisis, and has a plan. 82% of Bellevue voters is a load of people. They need your help to better understand the climate threats, to understand our community's official shared goal, to understand the mitigations we will undertake to reach that awesome goal. They need to know that this monumental effort will take all of us in the community working together. And what's missing at the moment is the political will to expand the ESP budget in order to create a larger, citywide movement to educate and engage the public by connecting them to the work that must be done by 2030. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I said, that was the end of our pre-registered speakers list. At this point, I would ask if there is anyone joining us here in council chambers who would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. In addition, anyone joining us online in Zoom, use the raise hand function or star nine.
Thanks. I'm Betsy Hummer, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nguyen House. People in Bellevue deserve to feel and be safe. And people in Bellevue cherish their neighborhoods. I have two budget requests for your consideration. Be sure to include the Community Crisis Assistance Team in the upcoming budget. And I have it right here. It was a six-month pilot program done in three different ways, and it was a council direction, I believe. Due to dramatic increase in calls involving individuals in crisis, the Bellevue Police Department recognizes the need to imagine new ways to respond to these calls and ensure the best outcome for the individual, their family, and the community by diverting them out of the criminal justice system and providing an alternative pathway to address their mental health and behavioral crisis. They had three different models. The evaluation showed that the Community Crisis Assistance Team was highly successful in diverting people from jails and hospitals, decreased police use of force, and significantly increased the amount of time Community Crisis Assistant Team officers spent on calls. Further, the evaluation provides evidence the CCAT team was highly effective in accomplishing the goals and outcomes laid out prior to the pilot. I encourage our city council to make sure that this is included in our upcoming budget. My second request is people cherish their neighborhoods. With the sunsetting of East Bellevue Community Council, there is an additional $4,500 that I hope will be allocated to the neighborhood associations to help keep neighborhood associations strong and continue the great outreach that the neighborhood outreach is doing. Thanks for your consideration and good luck with this budget.
Thank you, Ms. Hummer. I do see one additional hand. If you could state your name for the record when you first start, thank you.
My name is Marlene Meyer. I live at 2408 131st Place Northeast in Bridle Trails area. So I've come with a little bit different angle that I wish you would consider. Thank you so much for the budget that you are allowing us to speak on again. I come to you from a citizen that has been here for about 25 years now, from another state, California. I saw California grow from its childhood to a big city, as Bellevue is becoming. And I've also have gone back to visit, and I've seen what's happened to it. It's amazing. The growth is tremendous, the Silicon Valley that has been brought in with, you know, the technology that we have now. And yet, they don't even realize what air they're breathing. I went back and I asked my relatives, "How can you stand this?" And they've said, "What are you talking about?" It just doesn't occur to them. This weekend, I thought about it again as I went through the heat as we all had to suffer through, and maybe some of you, as many do now, have air conditioning. But I went to the lakes that I usually go to every year. Not all of them were open this year, closed because of pollution, the heat, the duck stuff that comes in when the heat is there. So hundreds of people were piling into those beaches that were open. Barbecues with smoke going up in the air. And I mean, they were parked illegally. They needed to get out of this heat. They needed to have a place to go. And it made me realize, this is real. This is happening. We seem to be getting hotter every year. And as important as it is to have our businesses and our income, I really feel we have to take a look at where our life is going here. And I'm seeing people move up from California because they don't like the environment there. I'm also seeing people sell their homes here and moving out because they don't like what they're seeing happening here. We had three homes sell recently on our street in Bridle Trails. I really think we have to stop and say, it's time. It's a complex issue, but it's time to take a look at what we can do realistically, still keeping our economics, but keeping a good life for people in Bellevue, a life where we can breathe and enjoy the water. So I ask you, if you can take a look at a budget, we have this, you know, a lot of things that we've gone into investing, the beautiful new pool that's going to open and so forth. There has to be some consideration of our future and to take a look at where we can find the budget.
I apologize.
Time is up. So I echo Court, I believe, who said, "City's worth its worth." My kids were offered to come speak tonight, and they said, "Why? Because the city council isn't going to do anything anyway." I ask you to prove them wrong. Thank you so much.
I do see one additional hand online. And that is Ruth Lipscomb. Ms. Lipscomb, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time begins now.
Thank you. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but I wanted to put in a plug in the budget for, please, consider funding a community responder mental health response team. I know that you have heard a comment about bringing the CCAT program that was piloted last year in. And I would hope that you would consider looking at the national examples that are, many of them changing, from a co-responder model, which was what was studied in the CCAT pilot, and they are going now to community responders, which are non-police response to mental health crisis situations. The CCAT pilot was incomplete. It did not have the option of dispatching just mental health first responders. I think the city should take that opportunity, maybe do another pilot, and make sure that the right response is the first response. We wouldn't send firefighters to do police work, and we wouldn't send police officers to put out a fire. So I think having mental health responders that could be dispatched directly from 911 is the right way. And it's good for the police officers who don't have the skills or the interest in doing that kind of work usually. It's good for the community. It's good for the people who are being served, and it is the most cost-effective way. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mayor, I do not see any additional hands. I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? All right, so our council will have a chance to discuss the budget between September and November with about six meetings and more if necessary. So we'll have our chance to have discussions and weigh in with all the comments we're hearing. I'm going to have us take a break until 8:00. And start with our second item, second public hearing. We have Ordinance 6673, and I'll ask Mr. Miyake to introduce this.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The second public hearing this evening is a council-initiated land use code amendment, which will, if adopted, eliminate Process One as well as Process Three quasi-judicial appeals to the council. Would you like to wait for the other council member?
You know, I would just like to ask that the people outside be a little quieter. Okay, thank you.
So I'll go ahead and continue. So tonight, the council's being asked to make a finding of necessity, as well as hold the public hearing and adopt Ordinance 6673. Joining us tonight is Kathy Gerler, our city attorney, who will provide a staff report before opening up the public hearing. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Miyake, and good evening, council. As Mr. Miyake indicated, you have tonight Ordinance 6673 before you for consideration that would eliminate the quasi-judicial appeals of hearing examiner decisions and recommendations to the council on Process One and Process Three. Michelle, next slide, please. So tonight, there are three actions that are being requested from council. One is to make a finding of necessity, which is required under the code in order for the council to retain the processing and the public hearing for this LUCA, rather than sending it to the planning commission. And then also, the council's being requested to actually hold a public hearing tonight. And then staff is recommending that the council vote tonight and adopt Ordinance 6673. Next slide, please. The agenda for tonight, I will give a brief overview of the LUCA and, excuse me, what the code does, the benefits, and how it meets the decision criteria in the land use code, and happy to answer any questions the council may have. And then, Mayor, I will turn it over to you for the council to make a finding of necessity and hold the public hearing if the council chooses to do that. And then after the public hearing closes, the council will then consider the adoption of the ordinance. Next slide. So just before we get into the substance, to briefly discuss the process timeline and how we got here on June, at its June 9 through 11 council meeting, council actually initiated this LUCA and requested staff to bring it back to the council for consideration. And then, since then, we have done the legal process necessary under the code and the Growth Management Act to get this before the council tonight. So on July 7, a notice of application was published concerning this proposed LUCA, which was the first notice to the public, and it started the public comment period. On July 14, staff then published the notice of this hearing, informing the public of today's public hearing date, included the staff report that's attached to the agenda memo, as well as the strike draft showing the public what the proposed code changes would be. And that brings us up to today, where the council's now scheduled to hold a hearing and consider adoption. Slide, please. Just to recap what the current code does. So under the current code, the hearing examiner for a Process One land use matter, which are CUPs, PUDs, and preliminary subdivision approvals, the hearing examiner holds an evidentiary hearing and takes testimony and reviews written evidence that's submitted and then makes a decision. For Process Three, which are now just site-specific rezones, the hearing examiner holds the same kind of the evidentiary hearing, but the difference is they only make a recommendation to the council, and the council ultimately makes the final decision. So for both of these, the code currently allows any party who participated in the hearing before the hearing examiner by submitting written or oral comments to file an appeal of the hearing examiner's decision or recommendation to the council. Those appeals to the council are quasi-judicial in nature. When hearing an appeal, the council is not acting in the role that you normally play as legislative and policymakers, but instead, you are acting as appellate judges. And the record before you is closed, which means that in deciding the appeal, the council can only consider the evidence that was presented to the hearing examiner, and that's contained in the hearing examiner's record. And parties cannot come directly to you to present additional information or evidence. You're required to review the record, and the reason is that you may only grant an appeal if the council finds that the hearing examiner's decision is not supported by material and substantial evidence in the record. So again, that is the role the council plays in these appeals, and it is akin to the role of an appellate court or a judge. It is not the role of a policymaker. If a party doesn't agree with the council's decision, they can appeal it to Superior Court, where a judge will essentially do much the same thing as the council did, and will again review the record made before the hearing examiner and may again make a decision about whether there's substantial evidence in the record, regardless of the decision that the council made on appeal. Next slide, please. So the proposed LUCA would, under Process One, still have the hearing examiner holding an evidentiary hearing and making a decision. The difference is there will be no appeal to the council. So if someone does not like the hearing examiner's decision, they still retain all their rights to file an appeal in Superior Court, where the court will review the record. If the hearing examiner's decision, if no appeal is filed, then the hearing examiner's decision is final, is the final decision of the city. Next slide, please. For Process Three, which now that the EBCC is no longer in existence, Process Three matters consist of site-specific rezones, again, hearing examiner still will hold a hearing and still will make a recommendation to the council, but there will be no appeal to the council of the hearing examiner's recommendation. The council will still be required to make the final decision on a rezone application. That's required by state law. That's required by state law. So you will, the council's to consider the hearing examiner's record and the recommendation of the hearing examiner when making that final decision, but you will not also be hearing a potential appeal of the hearing examiner's decision. And so the council will make the final decision on a rezone, and that may be appealed to Superior Court if someone disagrees with that decision. Next slide, please. So what are the benefits of this proposed Luca? One is that it optimizes the council's legislative and policymaking role. As I mentioned, the council's primary role is to act as policymakers, to adopt policy and code that implement your vision for the city. It is not the council's normal role to act as judges and to review evidentiary records and determine if there's sufficient evidence to meet a legal standard. Council members are generally not trained to do that. And one benefit of this Luca is it would get the council out of the business of acting as judges and allow it to focus on your normal policy and legislative role. This Luca would also promote fair, independent, and efficient land use decision-making. The hearing examiners, the city's hearing examiners actually do have expertise in land use adjudication. That is what they're trained to do. That's their job. And their jobs require them to act like judges. So having this kind of decision-making left to these trained specialists will promote independent and efficient decision-making and avoid the duplication that occurs when the Superior Court basically engages in a similar review to what the council would have done if they held and heard an appeal. And then finally, it encourages actually better public engagement and more meaningful public engagement when the public gets their comments in early, when the record is open. So as I mentioned, by the time an appeal gets to the council, the record is closed, and you cannot consider comments or evidence from members of the public. However, because the public, because there's a right of appeal to the council, the public may think that they can comment directly to the council and that by doing so, they have meaningfully participated in the process. And they, we have seen that happen. They may not understand that they need to participate in the hearing before the hearing examiner, when the record is still open. And therefore, they may miss their only opportunity to get their comments and evidence into the record. So this, again, this proposed Luca would encourage earlier engagement and participation by the public when their comments actually will be part of the record and can be considered. Next slide, please. Finally, there are some decision criteria in the land use code that a land use code amendment must meet and that the council must find or met in order to amend the code. And for the reasons I just mentioned and as is discussed more fully in the staff report, the proposed Luca would meet all of these. There are a couple of comprehensive plan policies listed in the agenda memo and discussed in the staff report. The Luca is consistent with those and does support them. The benefits of the Luca that I just discussed do provide and enhance the public health, safety, or welfare. They provide public benefits. And finally, the amendment isn't contrary to the best interests of the citizens or property owners of the city, because again, as I mentioned, all the benefits of the Luca just discussed would actually serve the best interests of the citizens. Next slide, please. So again, the action that's being asked to the council tonight is to make a finding of necessity, to open the public hearing, hold the public hearing, and then to adopt ordinance 6673. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation. Are there any comments or questions on the presentation? Okay, Deputy Mayor, can you please make a motion of necessity and open the public hearing?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to make a finding of necessity and open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there are two pre-registered speakers on the list this evening. And again, I'll remind the council and the public that this public hearing notice was published on July 25. Notice directed any written comments to be submitted to myself, the city clerk, or the city attorney. In response to that notice, two written comments were received and are included in your desk packet for this evening. With that, I'll call the first speaker, who's Heidi Dean, again, joining us virtually. Ms. Dean, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time begins now.
Mayor and council, you know, when this came up before, I fought it. This time, I'm not going to fight it, mostly because I just kind of feel like you've already decided it's a done deal. It's going to happen. But I do want to, I do want to make this point, which is that if the stated benefit of this Luca is that it encourages public participation early in the process, then council should commit to ensuring the public notification process is improved so that people are aware of projects, the potential impacts, and how and when they can comment. Because I, not the case. Somebody tell Betsy Hammer to stop calling me, please. And I'm going to say, an example of this is this very Luca itself. It was clearly discussed during your council retreat, which was the night through the 11th of June. There's no meeting minutes for that. I wasn't aware of this until I saw it published in the, in the weekly permit bulletin. So, you know, and this all happened. So again, better, better communication with the residents if we're saying we want early participation. Also, if council is going to remove themselves from the judicial role, then they must make sure that decisions that are issued by staff are indeed correct and fair and not manipulations of land use code and zoning and the sort of thing, as has happened in my center rezone attempts and other things that I have participated in with other neighborhoods. That has happened. So, you know, this forces residents to, you know, to go to the expense of litigation, you know, to fight in court and/or just have to give up, right? Because it's too expensive. So I want to make sure that if you're going to remove yourself from a judicial role, and I, I understand that, that you ensure that residents get a fair shake, that they are, that, that what they bring forward is being adjudicated correctly by, by staff. So that's pretty much everything that I have to say. I appreciate your listening to my suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Sally Lawrence.
Hello, Mayor Robinson and Deputy Mayor Nguyen-House and council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My comments tonight are about the proposed ordinance 6673, which removes the city council's quasi-judicial role in process one land use decisions. I have mixed feelings about this proposed change. In principle, I agree with the staff recommendation that the city council relinquish this role. I agree that city council members are not experts in land use law and that the amount of material they would need to review and understand is exactly the same material reviewed by the hearing examiner and could be voluminous. I agree that the appeal pathway to Superior Court is likely a better and fairer process in the long run. But I've been curious about the council's quasi-judicial role since becoming part of a community group advocating for a park in South Bellevue on a historic property owned by the late Milt Swanson. The property is now owned by a developer whose proposed planned unit development is going through city permitting. And ultimately, there will be both a process one and a process two land use decision. My organization, Save Coal Creek, believes that this property will have immense public value as a park connecting Cougar Mountain Regional Wildland Park and the city's own Coal Creek natural area. There are 4,000 folks from Bellevue and surrounding neighborhoods who agree with us and have signed our petition. So if the process one decision is to grant the PUD permit, it's likely my organization will appeal. We understand that the public hearing on this proposed development could occur as soon as September or October. My organization has been sending substantive comments about the deficiencies in the applicant's proposal for five years and requesting an EIS on the project. All this time, city council members have stated clearly that they cannot hear our concerns because of their quasi-judicial role. City council has not heard our voices and our concerns. So while I agree that city council, I should add one more thing, that Development Services did grant us a one-hour Zoom last December, but they have not responded to our request for an EIS. So while I agree that city council should take themselves out of this quasi-judicial role, my group is wondering, how can we make up for those five years of carefully avoiding speaking to council about our concerns and getting very little evidence from Development Services that they're taking our concerns seriously?
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Your time is expired. At this point, that is the end of our pre-registered list. I'd ask if there's anyone joining us here in council chambers that would like to make comment at this public hearing, please raise your hand. I see you, Mr. Marsh. Also, if there are folks online who would like to make comment, please use star nine to raise your hand. Mr. Marsh.
Hi again. So I'll start out just by echoing Heidi Dean's concern about, about notice. This, this issue is of a lot of interest to, to a lot of people in Bellevue. And the notice of this hearing came while I was on vacation. If my vacation had been one day longer, even a few hours longer, I wouldn't have been able to participate at all. And so I think for, for a subject of this interest, to schedule it in the depth of summer with such short notice, it just doesn't feel good. So when this issue came up, probably a couple of years ago, me and my organization, Coalition of Eastside Neighborhoods for Sensible Energy, strongly opposed it because we really felt that, that having an appeal without having to, to pay exorbitant legal expenses would, would be advantageous to us. Sometimes you learn the hard way. So, so I am, I, I am also supportive of this now because we want to be able to talk to our council members about these issues that impact our neighborhoods. When we're facing a very large developer or corporation that has a lot of contacts already established with staff, with council members, we're really at a big disadvantage if we can't talk about it. And I think it's, it's really odd that we couldn't even talk in an open public meeting about the project that, that, that we were interested in. It seems to me that that was, that was a weird conclusion of, of this, this law. But anyway, if I have now seen this work in another city, in Newcastle, we were able to talk to council members. Council members came to the public hearing and, and expressed their views. I imagine if it got appealed to, to court, they could, they could weigh in there, too. So I think also, being able to discuss this in a council meeting, it's not only communicating to you, but other people who are watching can get educated about the, the issue as well. So I've changed my mind, and I, I think this is the, is the right thing to do. But I really, I'm really still concerned about what happens when residents or a neighborhood has to argue on the other side of a, of a big corporation. It's just, it's just really hard. Hopefully, this makes it a little bit easier, but it's, it's still a very difficult thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. Mayor, I do not see any additional hands in chambers, and I do not see any hands online either. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I close, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I'll take comments or questions from whomever. And Councilmember Robertson, go ahead.
Go ahead and weigh in. So interesting what a change from a few years ago, when we first had a public hearing on this, to tonight. I think that as a council and as members of the engaged public, people see the stumbling block that is created when council members, who are your accessible public officials and policymakers, are forced to, you know, hold people at arm's length because they're sitting as a judge and they can't violate the appearance of fairness standards. They can't take information outside of the record, et cetera. The quasi-judicial process definitely puts distance between the public accessibility of the, the accessibility of council members to the public. So I do support this. I think it's the right thing to do. Most cities that have the budget to use a hearing examiner, use them and do not go to council except on rezones, which is, as the city attorney said, were required by state law to have the councils adopt zoning. So we have to do the rezones. So I'm very supportive of it for that reason. I'm also supportive of it because it makes the process faster and less expensive for applicants and interested stakeholders. As Mr. Marsh said, they, they, people think it might be cheaper to have an outlet to council, but in most of these things, everyone has hired a land use attorney, and all it is, is an extra process, an extra hearing, and you're paying your attorney that whole time. So going from the hearing examiner, So going from the hearing examiner, who's an expert in land use law, to Superior Court Judge under the Land Use Petition Act appeal is more efficient and more cost effective for everybody. So for those reasons, I do support the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll just say that when I first got on the Bellevue City Council, this came up, and I was I didn't know really much about it, but I was adamant that we not remove our responsibility that I thought we had to our residents. But I didn't realize that that meant we couldn't talk to the people we represented. And we were only able to judge the validity of the hearing examiner's decision based on the public record. We couldn't go outside of that. And it was based on the criteria that were listed that we didn't create, somebody else did, and whether the hearing examiner made a good decision based on that criteria. And so it was I felt like our hands were very much tied. It also costs a lot for the public and for the city. And I think that it's more representative to get out of the quasi judicial process. And most cities our size and larger even and smaller are not in this position of having this role. So for that reason, I'm going to support this motion. Are there any other guests? Councilmember Lee and then Councilmembers Zahn.
Thank you. I've been on the council for 28 years, and I have seen very, very few, you know, quasi judicial decisions. So I think it's not really very frequent. And at the same time, I hear that we all know talk about the the shortcomings, you know, of and also probably some advantages benefit of the quasi judicial process. However, you know, I, you know, this some are technical, this some are constraints, some are legal, you know? I've been not a lawyer, I, you know, I can't say how bad or worse. I look at how we can really understand the issues, how we look at all the different aspects. How do we hear from the public? How do we represent all points of view, whether it be applicants or residents, or for or against? To me, I think that's the most important thing that we need to know, we need to represent. And so I believe that this quasi judicial process has really a lot of limitations which has been articulated, and we can't even talk about them. And a lot of information comes up, not all at once, right? They come in different stages. If you come later on, after the process already begin, I mean, we have no we're not privy to it. We have no information. So the decision we make is really not complete. And it's a so so I believe that removing us from this role, having the opportunity to discuss, communicate with the people, with the public, and then also among ourselves, that's another important thing. Councilmember, at least I do, I make my choice and decisions based on our conversation, our discussion, you know, pros and cons and perspectives and whatever we do. I think that's the valuable piece of what we do as a council. And so for all those reasons, I believe you still ultimately have to recourse to go to Superior Court anyway, right? You have. And so I really think this is an improvement. It's about time that we get out of this process. And, you know, I should I don't think we should all pretend to be judges. As you all mentioned, we're not trained to do that. And even if we are, that's not our role. I don't think it should be because of the reasons articulated. So I would support this. I have one other kind of ask. I didn't get all the the name of Sally, if you can. And also, I have a sense that you haven't finished all your thoughts, thinking process. So I would like to see you present give to the city manager or the city clerk whatever else you want to say completely. And I would like to hear that, and I'd like to be able to, as part of the communication with the public. Thank you.
Ms. Lawrence. I'll give my statement.
Thanks.
So I would like to ask Kathy Gerla, if you could explain to us how free we are to discuss things we formerly weren't able to discuss after we take a vote tonight if we decide to remove ourselves from the quasi judicial process.
Well, you will not be subject to for certainly for process one, to the the appearance of fairness doctrine that limits your ability to to talk to people because you may be a judge. So that wouldn't apply anymore, certainly in the process one decision. For process three rezones, you are still limited to making a decision based on the record of the hearing examiner and and the hearing examiner's recommendation. So people should still be encouraged to make sure they get involved in the hearing examiner process.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers Zahn.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I support this as well. I remember when this came before us, and I think we were in a slightly different place. And having gone through several of these quasi judicial now, I've come to appreciate how much our hands are truly tied by the record. I remember wanting to ask questions and told very carefully that this is the box we have to live in, and there isn't anything else we are allowed to ask questions about. And so I have wondered whether we are actually providing value to the process or not, and concluding that ultimately, there is less benefit to having the quasi judicial than benefits because it cuts us off from being able to engage with the community, and we're limited by what's in the closed record. So it seems as though whatever we thought we might be able to lend to the process really did not I did not find that to be the case. So I appreciate the fact that we have this in front of us. The one comment I would make, though, as I'm listening to the public, is whether, as we look at our notification process, whether we should reevaluate the timeline and and how much time we provide the notice to be able to the public to understand what that looks like. And then my, I guess there's two questions. My second one is, those those processes that are already in place, if there haven't been engagement until now because of the potential for quasi judicial, is there a potential to create a little more space for that in the process, recognizing that this quasi judicial existed, which then prevented us from engaging? So those are my two questions.
I think, first of all, in terms of the reevaluation of timeline, we certainly could take a look at that. I'd have to defer to either interim Deputy City Manager Mike Brennan or the City Attorney Kathy Gerla for the second question.
So just briefly on that, so there the project has, as was noted in the public comments, the Park Point Project, it's a PUD, has been in process for a fairly extensive amount of time, has gone through modifications. I'm not familiar with exactly where we are in the timeline, but I do know that we are hearing from the the developer, that they're getting anxious about the amount of time it's taking in process. But that being said, certainly there is time for additional comment. It is a decision that will be in front of the hearing examiner with a staff recommendation that has not been published yet. So there certainly is more time to engage between now and probably fall before before it's in front of the hearing examiner.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Stokes.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Kathy, great presentation. I think you've laid out the the argument very well, including the the timeline here. And I think the the benefits to this is, you know, couldn't be more 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 clear in terms of optimizing our legislative role and policymaking role, promoting that fair, independent, and efficient and efficient land use decision making, and the public engagement piece, which, for me, and I think for all my colleagues as well, we're even sitting here, we want to be engaged. And I'm tired of having to keep a running list of topics that I can or can't talk about because it might become quasi judicial. And and that's really frustrating for all of us to hear when we're trying to engage with with the public on really important issues and issues that mean a lot to residents in the city. So I'm I'm in favor of this. I'd like to echo Councilmember Zahn's comments a little bit in terms of the the process, the notification process, a little bit on the timeline, but also just in terms of how and this has come up numerous times, I think, over the over the years, in terms of how we're we're notifying residents and the public. It's it's not just a timeline issue, I think it's when we're doing it or how we're doing it, where we're placing these notifications. I'd I'd like to see a a quick examination of that to see if there might be a way we might want to improve that process. And that that goes across the board. So and we did hear from from Heidi Dean and others about this issue, and it's not the first time, I think, any of us have heard about this. So, you know, I think those notifications really need to be multiple in multiple places and to ensure that the residents are are hearing these important topics so that they can participate in the process and share their their thoughts with us. But other than that, again, great presentation, and I'll be voting for this. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I agree with the comments made. I, you know, even, well, actually, being an attorney and one other attorney, you would think that we would want to do this, but it's it's a weird process. And I think it's frustrating if you know what the, you know, a judicial process is to work within this context. So from both the standpoint of people who understand it and all, and then having somebody who doesn't, and it's very confusing, and I don't think it actually leads to good decisions in many cases. So I agree, the biggest thing is, this will give us the opportunity to really engage with the community as we should, and to learn more about this without having to stay in a confined dimension, and save time and money. It's a win all the way around. And so I'm very pleased with this. I think we are we've done a good job of we can always do a better job of communication. There's always going to be somebody who didn't feel like the communication was good, but we can that's not a reason not to look at it better and and let people know how the process is, and we always work on that. But when it comes down to it, I'm glad we've we've done this, and it's it's, you know, a few few years, a few years late, but, you know, you can't, once you get there, then you move forward. So I'm ready to vote for it.
Okay. So do Deputy Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance 6673, amending chapter 20 dot 35 of the City of Bellevue Land Use Code to eliminate quasi judicial appeals to the city council from hearing examiner decisions and recommendations in process one and process three land use matters.
Second.
Do we need to set an effective date or say anything about an effective date?
It is in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, that passes. Okay, we have two study session items, but only one with with a discussion or and the first one is, they're both information only. Mr. Miyake, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. The first item is on the council's pledge to review the police department's use of policies. This is an informational briefing. As you mentioned, there's no council decision or action that is needed this evening. So joining us this evening is Nathan McComman, Deputy City Manager, Chief Wendell Shirley, Assistant Chief Andrew Popovich, Megan Black, Public Information Officer, as well as Sergeant Joe Ingman, who I believe is going to be joining us virtually, and both all from the police department. With that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Nathan, to kick this off.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, and members of the city council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. You're welcome to listen. Could you advance a slide or two? As the city manager said, this is for information only. And you're you're welcome to follow along with me on this slide. I'm going to walk a little bit through history, how we got to today, and let the rest take it from there. As City Manager Miyake highlighted, the presentation this evening comes as a result of work that was prompted by the council's pledge to take a thorough look at Bellevue's police use of force policies. And that pledge was established June 11, 2020. The council, City Manager Miyake, and Police Chief Mylett at the time, all welcomed the scrutiny, recognizing that Bellevue is not exempt from any challenge. The Bellevue Police Department has an established history seeking continuous improvement and looking for better ways to serve the Bellevue community. To support that commitment, this department has repeatedly maintained its accreditation through Kalia as one method of pushing the team to high standards in effective community policing. And then in advancing the council's pledge, a leading concern was to ensure that the use of force policy in Bellevue would contain no guidance that might lead to an unacceptable use of force. Thus, the focus of the work was examining the use of force policy to also include a diverse range of public input experiences and stories. As the council knows, from September of 2020 through February of 2021, the Office of Independent Review Group, or OIR, provided consulting expertise through public engagement research and analysis. In April of 2021, Mike Ginaco of OIR shared the findings and recommendations at a council meeting, and there were 47 in total. We took that report very seriously, and staff began to analyze the OIR recommendations and develop a plan to respond to all of them. And at the same time, the state legislature was in deliberations on police reform bills. So staff also needed to incorporate the coming requirements from new state laws and math those against the plan to address the OIR recommendations. Then in June of 2021, Chief Mylett and myself came before the council and talked about how we would advance the council's pledge. Chief Mylett committed to developing a path forward on all 47 recommendations, and that none of them would be put on the shelf. He also committed to returning to council over the next year on on a quarterly basis to share the progress. And since that time, the council has heard quarterly updates from Chief Shirley on how the department has moved through the recommendations. And it's been a year now since we launched that work, and we've taken action on all 47 recommendations. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Chief Shirley.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, and city council members. I'm pleased to be here tonight to provide you with our latest progress report regarding the Bellevue Police Department's responsiveness to the recommendations identified by the Office of Independent Review, OIR, report concerning the Bellevue Police Department's use of force. I first would like to take an opportunity to acknowledge the city council for your proactive approach and decision to have the police department's use of force policies reviewed and hiring the OIR group. I can assure you and the community that this has not been just a check the box exercise, but a meaningful review with robust discussions throughout our police department. Our goal has been to respond to all the recommendations that serve to make us a better police department. Throughout the process, our department has been open to listening to the community and to the national discussion on policing, and to be willing to change in order to make sure we get it right. We are a better police department, and the city is better off today because of the work we've done. So thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and city council members. The purpose of the presentation is to update you on the progress on the remaining 15 recommendations since the last update we provided in January. To date, we have responded to all 47 recommendations and have a clear path forward to addressing all recommendations, thus fulfilling council's pledge. Most of the final 15 recommendations focus on related to use of force reporting, use of force review, and critical incident responses, and updating the early intervention system. Many of these recommendations were already part of our procedures and practices, but we took that opportunity to incorporate them into our written policy manual. Here is a quick overview highlighting a few of the recommendations. Number seven, our school resource officers have been provided additional guidance and de-escalation. However, the SROs have not been in the schools since the beginning of COVID, and we have continued to work with the Bellevue School District in reimagining the SRO program.
Can we go back to seven?
Your honor.
I'm sorry, what?
Seven.
One slide ahead. There's seven? Okay, my bad.
There we go. Sorry. As I said, however, the SROs have not been in the schools since COVID, and we have continued to work with our Bellevue School District to reimagine the SRO program. We are very close to finishing a new agreement and bringing this to council. Number 46. This is a critical policy revision to ensure we are appropriately responding to people in crisis. For example, we piloted the Community Crisis Assistance Team, better known as CCAT, which teamed up with a mental health worker and a special trained police officer with the goal of getting people the right services and to ensure safety for all involved. We are also we also received good feedback from our community, and we appreciated that. Rest assured, if a program moves forward, we will continue to look at ways to improve the program to fit the needs of our community. Next one. The remaining 12 recommendations are connected to four policies. We have revised these policies as recommended and have been they have been presented to the affected unions before final publication. Recommendations four, five, and 11. We adopted all the recommendations requiring officers to document de-escalation tactics and supervisor review for each incident to ensure appropriate de-escalation tactics were used. Recommendations 18, 19. We have also treated canine bites as use of force incidents, but now they're simply a part of our policy. Additionally, number 35, supervisors now have a checklist for use of force investigations, which helps us with consistency. Number 39, we have updated our existing policy to formalize the early intervention system to allow for early positive intervention for an officer whose performance trends exhibit potential for review. Finally, the last three recommendations, we believe the review of all critical incidents, not just officer involved shootings, is best practice, and we have incorporated them into our policy. Two of the 47 recommendations called for us to publish our use of force data online. We completed that with our new transparency and accountability website. Additionally, we've gone much further and are publishing our crime statistics by time, location, and demographics. Our Public Information Officer, Megan Black, is here to give us a brief overview of those efforts.
Thank you very much, Chief. Well, over the last year and a half, we've heard loud and clear from our community that they want more transparency, they want to hear about what we do, when we do it, and why we do it, and how we do it. In response to that, we've been working very hard to update our transparency and accountability page on the police department website. Now, this site gives the community access to up to date and interactive crime incidents. All of these dashboards are interactive. Now, what that means is that the user can easily filter the data by date, location, crime, and demographics. Other dashboards provide information on the use of force incidents for the department over the past five years, and all the information related to our workforce composition and diversity hiring. Finally, we have a communications, a community engagement portal, and this allows our community to easily connect with the police department in a variety of ways and provide feedback. We have also completed extensive outreach with both internal and external stakeholders to get their feedback on this site. This input has been valuable in creating a website that is both informative and user friendly. We definitely welcome your feedback on this new transparency website, and we'll continue We definitely welcome your feedback on this new transparency website, and will continue to look for opportunities to engage and earn your trust and that of our community. Now, to explain how we use the data on this dashboard to help fight crime, here's Assistant Chief Andrew Popovich.
Thank you. Last time we were here, the police department was here, we had some discussions about the anti-crime initiative, and we advised that we would return, which we are back today. This region has been a lot of concern about crime and the amount of crime in the area. That concern also hit Bellevue. So what we did is we made sure we had a plan in place to address those concerns, and making sure that we're taking action to try to address the needs of the Bellevue community. This graph here shows the crimes against property in Bellevue. This was one of our key focuses at the police department, to make sure this is going in the right direction. As you can see by the graph on the right, we've actually seen a steady decline month after month in 2022. And part of that is due to the actions of our officers and changing the way we address crime. So during this presentation, we're going to discuss that approach and tactics we take to address those concerns, and we do, we're doing all of this in partnership with our community. So first of all, it's all about data. This is actually a slide showing shoplifting in the last 45 days by location. This is actually zoomable, so officers can zoom into it and zoom out to see which businesses are being affected or locations are being affected for this. And what this anti-crime initiative allows us to do is we're able to quickly analyze the data and visualize it, so our officers know where this crime is occurring. And our current dashboard, it updates so quickly that our officers are able to get this data even faster so that we can make effective decisions in the field. And all of our personnel can have access to see that and plan those operations. So this actually is a visualization of the location where we've run operations already. These operations can be business-specific, location-specific. For example, if a business is experiencing a large amount of shoplifting, we can actually go there, work with the owners or with the security personnel to have an operation occur at that location. The great part is this data is so new that we're able to be flexible and move across the city. If this data changes, we're not a month behind or weeks behind. We literally can make that change on the fly and move our officers to a different location. Also, when the operation's occurring, we are making sure we're communicating with the community, both our officers on scene, talking to people about something that's happening in their, in their community, as well as using your PIO to put out information after the fact of what we did in the area. So this shows a number of operations run by each captain in each sector of the city. The operations themselves in this anti-crime initiative are our patrol captains. Because they're already sector captains, have those relationships with the community, they actually are able to use those relationships to then deploy officers into those areas. And part of this is a citywide initiative, so it's our officers in patrol, in investigations, in our, in our traffic unit, they're all working together, and the captain has the ability to pull resources from all over the police department to accomplish the goal of addressing those criminal issues in those areas. It's also working, like I said, in cooperation with the business owners. We communicate ahead of time and making sure they're aware that we're in the area, as well as the community members that address the concerns with us. These are actually some photographs from actual operations that we've already run. These visits, these operations can be high visibility or plainclothes. It really depends on what the needs are of the operation itself, and our captains have the ability to deploy those officers how they see fit to try to address it. The high visibility gives that visible appearance of police officers in the area. It's putting a large number of officers in that geographic area, so you see the police officers there. It's that presence of police officers there and the ability to communicate with the community about what we're doing. The plainclothes could be used for specific concerns like shoplifting, of going into the store and being present to assist security in identifying individuals. The biggest concern amongst the community sometimes with these larger arrests or these emphasis patrols is there's a heavy-handed tactic at the police department. We very specifically have addressed this by making sure that officers still have the discretion to make arrests or not arrest. Having the discretion if it's a first-time offender to look at alternates to in custody arrests. If it's someone in crisis, looking at a different resource. But at the same point in time, by attaching our investigations division and detectives to the operation itself, if we do have the individual that's involved in organized retail theft, or has been involved in large criminal actions, there's someone there to do the interrogation and interview and look at different charges to charge that. So we have not taken that discretion away and made sure those officers have the ability to treat each person individually. We are also not judging success on arrests. It's about the data. Are we reducing crime? Because a crime that is prevented is more important than a criminal arrested, because the person is not feeling victimized. People feel safe in their community, there's one less person involved in the criminal justice system, and it addresses both the fear of crime as well as the actual crime rate. So back over to the chief.
Thank you, Andrew. Again, so I'd like to thank the council for your leadership in pledging this extensive review. We have now addressed all 47 of the OIR recommendations and have a clear path forward to adopting the remaining ones once after they're reviewed by the unions. We look forward to communicating with you again when the final recommendations have been adopted and presented, and also present you with the MOU for the School Resource Officer Program to address that issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any comments or questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Barksdale.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and appreciate the, as you can imagine, the data-informed approach to policing, and also the multifaceted approach to dealing with each situation independently based on what's happening in that moment. Appreciate that. Couple of questions in terms of the website. Really like, and I've already perused it, and really like what's on there. What are the next steps for that in terms of, like a roadmap? What do you see is coming next to enhance the site? And I was also curious about who the stakeholders were that provided feedback, you can just say stakeholder groups, that provided feedback on the website. And then my last question, the source of the data, so it's real time, where are those data coming from?
So, starting with the first question there, what comes next? So I think part of that is what data does the community want from here? Because as we rolled this out, to address second question a little bit there, we sent this to advisory councils. We put it up, and we sought feedback from the community as well to, what have you guys seen on there? What more information do you want? It's something of, we can pull the information, we want to make this as automated possible in the background, and that's what's happening. It's just pulling from our, our systems that we already have and just populating into a dashboard. There's a public-facing dashboard, which is the dashboard that the community can see. Our officers for our internal operations have more data because we want to make sure we're filtering the data to the public so that certain things are filtered out. And I think that's an open question right there. If the community, anybody who's interested in like, hey, do you have this data or have access to it? We believe in that transparency. If we can make it public, we'd like to show it on there, but making sure that we're presenting our data that somebody else can compare it to.
Got it. Anything you want to add?
I, excuse me. So as far as our engagement with the stakeholders, all of our advisory council members were sent out and solicited feedback. We stood up a engaging Bellevue website, and we solicited feedback as well, and we put it out to the public. So any of the comments that we got, it, it really did help us hone in and look at it from different lenses, and we made significant changes as a result of that, and we are open to more feedback. This is, this is new, and in fact, this was just presented at a conference for the company, and nobody has done a site like this in this company like Bellevue has, and it received tremendous praise. And so we're cutting edge, and we just want to keep improving.
And the source of the data?
NORCOM.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's like our records management system.
Yeah. Ooh. Yeah, go ahead.
One question on that. The hiring data is coming from HR, which is populated at a different rate. The crime rate is at one, the internal hiring stuff is not as updated as often.
Got it. That's, that's pretty cool, that it's coming directly from NORCOM. My only comment would be, when we do our survey, I think it would be interesting to compare the data in the dashboard with the surveyed responses segmented by neighborhood area, so that we could just see, as you were talking about reducing the fear of crime and actual crime, gauging that sentiment in the performance survey that goes out or different survey.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. First, great presentation, really appreciate it. And that website wouldn't surprise me if that was, we can say, an award-winning website here in the next year or so. So that's just great. And thank you all. From, from day one, going back to Chief Mylett, this was always taken seriously, and I'm glad you said it, chief, that this wasn't just a check-the-box situation. This was taken at, at face value, really walked through every one of these 47 recommendations. But thank you so much for your openness to continuous improvement, for constantly looking at the highest possible standards and trying to adopt them into our, our code, which a lot of this process was, was really just getting it in the policy, codifying this. So, and, and that's an important thing to do. It's, it's one thing to think it, or, you know, that's kind of our informal policy, but to actually have it written down certainly is important. So I'm glad we went through this, this, this council pledge and really admire the, the way the whole department has approached it. Couple of questions based on, on the, on the presentation here. So going to the anti-crime initiative. So what I've heard residents time and time again talk about shoplifting is the absolute brazen approach that some of these shoplifters take, where they don't care what the repercussions are. So I'm a little bit concerned when I hear, well, you know, there's still discretion, we may not make arrests. So what is the repercussions that we're trying to highlight here in order to really reduce long-term the amount of shoplifting that we have seen a very sharp increase? Because unless there, in my mind, unless there are some repercussions, this might go away for a little while, but then it's going to come, come, come right back. And I'll, I'll just give you a quick anecdote. I mean, my local QFC had over $50,000 just of alcohol alone stolen from that store, and they have a policy not to engage with shoplifters. So now everything is behind lock and key. So it really didn't stop at per se, because now they're moving on to other products within the store. So that's one question that I have, and then I'll have my other question after that. But Chief Shirley, please.
Yeah, I'll start off. Well, first off, we, we don't have any control over, right, what the stores decide to do in terms of their employees, whether they engage or not. But I will say this, we know the shoplifting is one of those property crimes, that there's been a, a significant uptick, and, and we've taken a, a zero stance on that, because there has to be consequences. If we get called and, and, and you're detained by us for shoplifting, and, and we can make an arrest, we're going to make the arrest, because I think it's important to, to make sure people understand there's consequences to actions. Now, on top of that, we still can look at a person, and if there's some intervention things that maybe a substance abuse issue or something else that's going on, that can happen too, right? It's a three-pronged approach, prevention, intervention, and enforcement. And so we're certainly not saying people are going to be allowed to come and shoplift, and there's going to be no consequences, because there has to be. And, and so that's kind of our approach with it. And we're working closely with the business owners. We joined the, the organized retail theft coming out of the AG's office as well, because some of this is organized as well. And so we're, we're enforcing those laws pretty closely. Anything else you want to add?
Yes, and especially when you deal with the terms of an individual in a mental health crisis, sometimes those come across as a trespass call, and it could be one of our areas we're doing emphasis patrol. It may not seem that we want to charge the individual with trespass, but instead get them the help, rather than going by default, because we're doing emphasis, we'll charge every single person. But if the person is committing the organized retail theft, which I'm guessing with that alcohol, a lot of it is probably sold, stolen for resale, that we would have the ability to have a detective right there that sit down the person, because if QFC hands us the bulletin going, this guy's hit five stores, or gal's hit four stores, we have the detective going, okay, well, that's a different, different status, and mentally, he'll, individual is trying to steal something. We want to have that discretion in that process. But if it's someone that's out there committing those crimes, we want to make sure we have the proper resources in place to go, no, we're going to charge you for as many of these crimes as possible, and look at the enhancements of organized retail theft versus theft. And that's something where we want to make sure that we have those resources in place to address those concerns, and also if the store, we are willing to work with any of those stores that come forward, or businesses, and we're standing there ready to partner with them, so that it isn't their employees taking that step to try to stop them. It's one of our officers there that's in plainclothes willing to stop the person walking out. And that's a key piece, where they may have a rule against that, but partnering with us, we can actually make those stops and make those arrests and detentions where they can't. So we stand ready to stand with our partners in the community and the business community to make sure that we're making those arrests.
Thank you. Excellent answer. My next question was, Chief Shirley, you had mentioned reimagining SROs, and, and I'll fully admit, when I hear reimagining, I get a little bit concerned as, I think that term has led to some, quite frankly, some bad policy decisions as relates to law enforcement. So I'm, I'm just curious what that looks like and what the current status is with SROs. I believe they are going back to one or two schools, but, but in a slightly different manner. So I'm just curious, because I get hit with this question a, a lot by parents who have kids in the school, and they want to see the SROs in the school, they want to see them back. A lot of them never wanted to see them go away in the first place, so a little bit of an update there, I appreciate it.
Well, so when I, when I say reimagining, and I know the word has been used loosely and mean different things to people, but for me, it just means rethinking, rethinking the current model, right? And so we started working very closely with the school months ago, put together a small committee of, of people from the department and the district, and, and put them in a room and said, here are the concerns, because you're right. Many people never wanted the SROs to leave. There are others that do not want them in the school ever again, right? And so we had to look at both sides of that issue, and what were the concerns on, on each side of, of this issue, right? What were the concerns? And, and respect both sides of the concerns, and, and then see what we can come up with that looks different, but also accomplishes all the things that I think everybody wants to accomplish, right? Keeping our kids safe, building relationships with, with, with school resource officers and our young people. And I think we were able to put together what I think is a pretty good model, that I think many people will be happy with on both sides of it. And, and so I, I think now it's just a matter of working with the school in terms of timing and getting an MOU together, finalizing it, and then getting it before you. But I, I'm really proud of, I think, what we together were able to put together, and I think most people will be very happy, and it will accomplish all the same things that everybody always wanted. And it takes into consideration some of the concerns that people had, and they were legitimate concerns. Whether people agreed with them or not, they were real to them, and so we took that into consideration. And like I said, I think we, we will have a pretty good product at the end.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmembers on?
Yes, thank you. You know, thank you, chief, and, and all the work that you've done to work on this. I really appreciate the fact that you went beyond the OIR about use of force and really looked holistically at really community-centered partnership policing, which, you know, that's a culture that I think we're, we're really very proud of, and we continue to learn and grow and get better. I appreciated the comments you made about the SRO, because what I hear you saying is that as we learn, we are continuously improving on how we deliver service and making sure that it's grounded by all the voices that you hear. So I really appreciate that part. And the prevention, intervention, and consequence, we need all three, which absolutely so happy that we continue to have that, having the dashboard. I do have some, a couple of questions, though, and I'll just read, just put them out there, and then you can respond. One is, as you've looked at the data, what kind of insight have, have you been able to glean from the data that we've been collecting? And two, when I thought about the crowd control policy, number 33, it prompted me to think about, as we do mutual aid with other cities, how does that crowd control policy we have dovetail if the other cities' policies might be different than ours? On the intervention side, I don't believe we currently have a community court. Is that something that we are talking about with the county, potentially pursuing, so that as we look at that? The one on de-escalation, that number 46, I really support that. What I'm wondering is how that fits in with the 988 dispatch, and as they come in, how that works with our own dispatch, how we're educating our 911 and 988 on how, what information is really helpful for us to be able to have the best response? And then lastly, I know we, we talked a little bit about property crimes, which absolutely we've been hearing from the community is an issue. The other one I'm hearing is the speeding in our streets and the drag racing in our streets. in our streets. And so I wasn't sure, as you looked at increased police focus, how you might help us understand what we're doing related to that. Thank you.
So the first, if I heard you correctly, your first part of your question was, what are we gleaning from the data dashboard? Is that what you're saying in general? And then I'll hand it over to Assistant Chief Papa Chalk on the crowd control issue and speeding. Well, being that we have different categories in the data dashboard, let's just use crime, right? It's certainly telling us, and we've known this, and it's kind of confirming it too, right? In the region, quite frankly, across the country, property crime, there's been an uptick in property crime in our region, for sure. Car burglaries, car thefts, shoplifting, especially catalytic converters, right? That's been a huge thing in, in the state of Washington. And so that certainly is telling us that there is some organized crime going on here, and it's profitable, right? Someone buying these catalytic converters, that's why people are continuing to steal them, right? And so we, we've used that data, and that kind of matches what we're seeing in our data dashboard, whereas Bellevue is not immune from that, right? We have a lot of cars here, we have a lot of shopping centers, and people come here. And so what we've had to do is, is think regionally, and think more task force-wise, communicating with our other law enforcement partners, because people who steal cars have no boundaries. And, and so we start talking to Kirkland, or Redman, or Seattle, or whomever, and start working closely together, and using some of our other resources, undercover resources that you may never see, to go after some of these individuals. And not only just going after the people that are stealing, but getting intelligence and going after the buyers, right? And so in a snapshot, that's what we're gleaning, that this is an issue that if a city doesn't do what we're doing, you know, take the initiative, it will continue. So that's the part, that's generally what we're gleaning from our data dashboard. But we also look at, you know, our hiring practices, and diversity in the police department, and trying to improve that as well. So there's good information being gleaned, and it will continue. And then I'll hand it over to Assistant Chief Papa Chalk on the crowd control issue.
Yeah, so our policy for, if our officers are deployed in a mutual aid capacity, does not change. They're still required to abide by all city of Bellevue policies if they're deployed to another city. And that's something that when we get that mutual aid request, we make sure we evaluate internally within our procedures to make sure there's nothing in conflict by sending those officers to a different location, because we don't want to have a conflicting rule if it's put in place by the city that they're going to, that may conflict with our policy. And that's something that we would look at, and possibly not deploy officers into a situation where they're placed at risk by that deployment. But they're always bound by the policy, because they're Bellevue employees. So those would not change if they get sent to another city. As far as the speeding and drag racing concerns, the nice thing about the anti-crime initiative and the dashboard is that is actually tracked as well. We know where officers have written speeding tickets in the past. We can do an analysis of the speeds that they, they're going in the area. We can also look at collisions that are occurring in certain locations. So I can pull up a dashboard of seeing. So as we expand this in the use, it's something where we can more effectively deploy our motor resources to address those, because right now, we're using TSRs to do that. So if someone writes in and says, there's speeders on my road, we don't know if the speeders are going one mile an hour over the speed limit, because it's an independent resident that's sending us this, versus, is a person going 40 in a 25? That's a difference. So by doing this and doing analysis, we can see where the collisions are occurring, and then deploy our officers more effectively. So as we roll this out and keep working with it, it's something where we can not just use a crime, we can use it for other purposes to address other concerns in the community about traffic safety, about the theft, about other feelings of safety. So as we expand this out, we can look at other different things to deploy our officers to address. As far as 988 goes, it's something we're already in conversations with, with the fire department, as far as the most effective way that we can move forward in working with the new program. It is a new program for everyone as we go into it, but it's something that we're in active communication with the fire department, and the Bellevue Police Department has a long history of partnership with the fire department, and we're always looking out what's best for the resident that we're dealing with, whether it be the police department dealing with them, or the fire department dealing with them. We want the best outcome. And that's something that we're always in partnership with them, and we don't have a answer for you yet on that as something that is, it's an evolving process.
And I, and I think the last part of your question was intervention. While we're not looking at courts right now, we certainly are working with other social service providers, if you will. And that's what I meant by, if someone's shoplifting, and that's a regular, okay, they're gonna, there's gonna be consequences attached to that, but then we're also gonna find out, all right, does this person have some other challenges that maybe we can link them to some services? So that three-pronged approach is always at play, right? Prevention, intervention, and enforcement. So I think we've managed it all.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, public safety is always number one for the city of Bellevue. And I think we should see that. People come to Bellevue, you know, we know, because they want to be safe, and they know it's safe. And so, but, you know, as, also you know that Bellevue has been traditionally, and fundamentally, we've built a good foundation, and this has always been here. So it's complementary to all the past police officers, and the chiefs, and the leadership. And so, but however, we also recognize, you know, things change. And you have a very complicated, very complex situation to deal with. Nothing stays the same, status quo. You know, we know this, our society has gone through so much, you know, changes in the last few years. And the whole nation, sometimes, you know, I feel it's in turmoil, but we're still, you know, the safest place that I know of. And we envy of a lot of people. That's why people continue to come to Bellevue. So I want to thank you, thank the police department, thank Chief Shirley, all, you know, coming in and responding, demonstrating, and your ability to manage, and to work with such a complex situation, and maintaining what we are. You know, I always say that proof in the pudding is in the eating, right? And so it is what, you see what, what we've got, what we have. And, you know, my firsthand information, I can tell you is, you know, I've talked to Chief a number of times, and I've seen the community concerns, all the things that have been talked about, you know, at the council, and I'm sure there's a lot more. But, you know, when citizens brought to your attention, when they talked to me, through me, you've responded, and you've taken care of those things. And so I, we don't need to go through it all, because we can see something today, tomorrow will be different. And you, but we trust you, that you can handle it very well. Example, obviously, it's that we have adopted the OIR, the 47 recommendations. You know, you just don't write it all. When we took on that pledge, you know, I really appreciate the mayor and the council, we don't know what we're gonna get. You know, it's a, it's a brave step of faith. And, but now we see what we've accomplished. And another thing is, we're still talking about sometime, something in the future, SRO. You know, when you come in, I'm sure the chief, you didn't know what we're talking about. For people, I knew what we had when we had SRO. It's really something the school wants, it's good for the communities, it's making sure the young people understand that police officers are friends, it's officer-friendly. It's not somebody who go in there and try to lock up the kids, you know, hassle them. So, but it has changed. So things are different. And, but you, again, have demonstrated, you, with all the good things you just talk about, you know, like database, like technology, all the issues, they all come with a territory. And so they all part and parcel of what you have to do. It's very complicated, complicated, very complex, but you've done very well. So I, I believe that, you know, shoplifting is one, obviously, it's even heard from me many times, Victoria, David and Mayor talk about, people walk out. But, you know, that depends on the merchants, what do they want to do? The people, how can we handle it? At the same time, there's a lot of complexities. So it's up to you guys, you know, I'm not going to tell you how to run your office, how to do your business, because, you know, it's, it's something that you have to prove, and you have done so. And there will be more to, at the beginning of this meeting, we talked about Councilmember Robertson's, you know, proposal or comment. We have to look at the abortion issues, you know, that's another issue you have to handle. There are many others not even spoken. We don't even know has been a concern, but we don't take it lightly. Public safety is, you know, doing things the right for the public safety, on whatever it may be. And that takes you, who is, you know, cognizant, who's responsible, with your principle of this, which we talk about. And I think that makes a lot of sense. So we, I want to just say that we appreciate what you're doing, and I appreciate your, you know, police officers, everyone. People have been there for many years, you know, Chief Papa Chalk, and brand-new chief from California, you know, but you, and, and.
Councilmember Lee, would you mind wrapping up?
Thank you. So I really want to compliment, and we want to encourage, keep on doing this, and we will be, we're in good hands. So thank you very much, and I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you. Well, I couldn't be prouder of our police department. It's always been excellent, but it just seems to get better every and every year. And so thank you for that. I know that this city trusts you to really look out for them, and, and care for the city. Couple of comments. One is, when you were here last time, we talked about the increase in crime. I'm so glad that the city's on top of that. But we have, you know, we have seen it, we have to acknowledge the increase in property and violent crime. The, the thing that is, I think, so concerning for some people is the unpredictability of it. I know that there's some fear out there, particularly because when people are struggling with behavioral health, they're really unpredictable. We've seen folks throwing rocks at cars, doing damage in Victoria. We've seen young women working in retail stores in the mall, getting hassled by someone in a behavioral health crisis. We've seen a lot of those kind of situations across the city. I'm most familiar with Victoria, but we've seen that. And in addition to the shoplifting that's caused by behavioral health and other issues. So I think that we need to make sure that we are continuing to look at that. I think the CCAP program's really good. I definitely want to make sure that we are on that issue as a city, it is not just on the police department. I guess, third is, one of the things that I think I would like to see in terms of information coming forward at the budget, and I don't know if you already have this data, so I'm gonna ask for it here, it may be already in the dashboard. I'd like to see how we provide the level of service within the city of Bellevue, whether that's the number of law enforcement officers we have on staff, the number who are on a different shift, based on population, and of course, we have a different daytime population as a nighttime population, or whether it's response times by, by different types of calls. I don't know what the best practices is. I think we had, I know we had a report on staffing, I don't know if it addressed this, I don't remember. But figuring out what the level of service is, as, as far as how it's measured as a best practice, and what the level of service we need to make sure that we do continue to have a very safe city, that we can do the emphasis, that we can make people who are starting to feel fearful now comfortable because they are safe. That's the kind of information I need to have, as far as what is the level of service? And then how are we meeting that mark? And if we're not meeting it, what will it take to do so? Again, it's a budget question. And I guess how that level of service connects to crime statistics would be the big picture. And then, so I don't know if you have that information, I'll let you talk, I'll just, I want to be efficient with my time, because we are running over on this agenda item. But if we have that, and if we don't, can we get it? Those are my questions. And then I just wanted to lend support to Councilmember Barksdale's comment about the surveying information segmented by neighborhood and perception. I think that's a really smart idea, and something that will help us make sure that we are giving care and safety to the entire city. We are one city, but we are one city made up by neighborhoods, and we want everyone to feel safe. So if you have that level of service information, if you, if you have it, what is it? And if you don't, can we get it in time for the budget discussion? Thank you.
Yes, I would just say this, we are working on that, so you'll be happy to hear.
And you'll have it for the budget? I want that information when I'm making budget decisions. Yeah?
Got it.
Will, will you have it, do you think?
Yes, we should.
All right.
We should.
I guess I should be looking at the city manager, we'll have it, right? Thank you.
Understood. Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, I don't want to take too much time, we are kind of going over, but very good conversation, and I'm, you know, we do have a great police department, we can say that, and that's, we can say it back for a long time, but that's, that's not good enough. That's, we're doing better, and I think that's what's important. We're learning more, and I think going through the trauma of these last two, three years is, a lot of places have freaked out, and we didn't. We've actually approached it in a very, I think, rational and productive way, and we're better, better sitting, a better police department. And that's, that's where we're all striving to be. You don't want to just be stuck as, you know, we're really good, we get all these gold stars, but I really appreciate the, and what you've looked into these last few months is just amazing in terms of the whole long picture. I did have a couple of questions on it, and, and I think, you know, we just have a great police department, and we want to keep it that way, and we want to actually help you in going forward on these things. You know, and I think, I really appreciate the, talking about the CCAP piece, and I would encourage you to look at the other alternative, or, or ways to complement that. And you looked at that as how it would work, and you've learned a lot from it, and maybe there are some other things that could be woven into that, and make it even more effective. So sometimes you need to, I think, you know, it's easy to have this thing you work on, and then you want to keep doing that. And it may be the best, but I think there's some other things to look at. So I know you're working on it still, and I would, you know, like to see that at least taken into account, maybe there are better ways, because, you know, we can always, there are different places where the police officers need to be. And so I think that's good. Same thing with SROs. I've been, you know, it's on the school, Bellevue School Foundation for over 12 years. I've continually been working with them for a long time, ever since I got here in 91. And there's a lot of back and forth, and I think, again, this is one where SROs and what they were doing is, was okay, but there was a lot of, lot of concerns and problems with it. And I think, again, what you're hopefully approaching on is something that that works even better. There are a lot of parents that like it, there are a lot of parents that don't. There are a lot of kids that like it, a lot of kids that don't. I was on a, on a team to take kind of appeals for our work with the kids who got into trouble, and had some penalties and all, and we reviewed those and all. And a lot of it came down to where it seemed that the SROs weren't very effective in that, and there were issues on it. So I think having the layoff was good, to actually take a look at it, and putting equity and caring into it, as opposed to just saying, you know, this is a police officer, and, you know, get to know them, they're, they're good and all that. Actually, work with them in a way that's productive, and provides a certain good level of service is important. So I think, again, you're taking an opportunity to make some changes because of circumstances, and I think you're doing a, you know, you're going on a good path on it. And I, you know, we all talk to our kids, and I have, you know, heard things from a lot of kids on it, and I think they're, that it's a good program. But again, it's not just there to make people, to make parents feel safe because they have a police officer there. It's there for a much more important reason. And so I'm, you know, pleased your approach on that. The other, last thing I wanted to talk about is that, again, well, the other thing is, you're, you're not just going out and putting people in jail. You're, as you said, and I think you have, all of you have a very good approach on this, is how you deal with somebody who's done something that's, that's improper, that's wrong. And what's the reason? What are they doing? And there, as you know, you know better than anybody, that there are all different types and reasons why people do things. And it's a hard, hard, hard job to figure that out, and to deal with it. So I think your, again, your responses, I like, are very good in terms of, you don't just take them and put them in jail. I mean, that costs a lot of money to taxpayers, it costs a lot of, a lot of times, it keeps people from ever, ever having a chance to be productive in life again. And so you're working with them. There are people who need to be in jail. So, again, I think you're really approaching this in a very, very rational and very positive way. The last question I have, and just back to kind of the front part of your talking, it's, and tie. it's, and ties into the CPAP, uh, CCAP and, uh, the other kind, some other approaches of how do you work with people who are in, you know, need help or who are in trouble? How do you, and, and, uh, to Popcock, I, how did, how do you, um, how do you determine where and when are the type of response and type of person need to respond? I was a little bit, how does that work in terms of, how do you do that communication? Because if somebody's doing something and then somebody gets stopped or whatever, arrested, how do you know you have the right person aboard? And I, I, it's just that it doesn't, you know, without knowing how you're functioning, it's kind of hard to understand how do you get the right person there to help them at the time in, in a crisis?
Are you referring to like a CCAP response?
Yeah. Or any, or anytime when you have officers go out and you, you're not quite sure what you're going to find.
Correct.
If you find, if you go out and send a, an officer out, you go out and you find out that somebody that really needs some, some mental health and you're there, how do, how do you coordinate that on a time factor?
Absolutely. So that is part of what we designed into the CCAP process, is that we started the diversion process at dispatch.
Hmm, okay.
If it is someone calling to dispatch and the dispatcher could clearly tell that that individual had some sort of crisis going on, they would be, they can divert that person there and say, we're sending a CCAP team, where it's a mental health professional and an officer together. In, on the way, let's say they dispatched the call and on the way, the CCAP officer hears, oh, I know that house, I've been there before. Or let's say, we get this all the time, where our dispatchers dispatch something and it kind of changes, it evolves. At any point in time, if they send a patrol officer, a CCAP officer could jump it and say, patrol officer, don't go, CCAP's going to go instead. And they had the ability to do that and cancel the officer and them go instead. The third point of diversion is actually when they get there. If a patrol officer gets there and looks at the situation and goes, ah, this is a mental health call, this is the, the trespass call, the person won't leave, but they get there and if someone in crisis, not because they don't want to leave, they just don't have the mental ability to make that determination, this patrol officer could back off and go, hey, could you send me a CCAP unit to the scene? So we designed the system with three different points of where you could divert the call away from a normal patrol officer to a CCAP officer. And that's something I think is very, very, I, you hear a lot that police officers can't do something like that. Well, police officer's a job, it's not the person.
Right.
It's who you hire that wears the uniform.
Yeah.
It's not a police officer can't do it, it's, did you hire the right person to do that work? And that's something that Bellevue has, is that we have officers that want to do that work. And you hear a lot that off, police officers can't do it. I don't think that's quite correct. We hire the right people to do this job because we want the right officer in Bellevue that can wear all those different hats, that we want them to be able to do the SRO job where they're communicating with kids one minute, but being able to be the protector if someone comes in there to harm the children. And I think that's a key difference in this is that we train our patrol officers and they got used to getting the call and going, oh, no, I can call, I have that resource available. And that's the key part, is making sure the entire department understands that by having a CCAP unit available, anybody can call at any point in time because that's the best outcome for the person in crisis.
Right.
And that's a culture piece that you have to build into a police department because just because it doesn't work someplace else, doesn't mean it, we have a unique circumstance here that we believe that that will work effectively because we've tested it out because we have the right people. And I think that's how we do that determination, is that we set up those trips along the way that could, and any one of those gets tripped, we send a different person to the call. A team of, that works together, that understands each other, that knows if that person needs the MHP, the officer can back off. Or if they need the officer, the MHP can back off. So that you have that process where they're working together because many times what the 911 call is, is not what we do when we get there and that's the risk factor, is that people not always honest to 911 or they, that they don't have the whole story and when we get there, sometimes it's not the same thing.
Yeah. It's great. So you have the.
Councilmember Stokes, can I ask you to wrap up, please?
I'm sorry.
It's not you.
That's fine.
It's like nine.
That's all, I was just going to ask one quick question. It's fine, you got it.
All right, thank you. I'm, I'm going to curtail my own comments, but thank you very, very much. Um, I will just say that, you know, we asked at a time of, a tumultuous time for you to do a review and your department was so happy to do that and knew that it was something that was important to the council and to your community. And the attitude that you did it with and the, um, just spending an entire year with a cons, outside consultant to do this kind of review, it's been very impressive and I feel like a lot of good things have come out of it. So I want to thank you for your good work and for your response to that request. And my only question is, will we be doing another review at some point? Is this going to become like a regular thing? I know the dashboard kind of keeps track of what's going on, but what are your thoughts on that, Chief?
Well, the, the short answer is we're always looking at ways to improve, right? Internally, uh, in terms of our protocols, processes and procedures, uh, how we provide service. So it's ongoing, uh, trying to make our police department better to serve the community. So we're reviewing every day.
Great. Yeah, appreciate that. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. We in our packet had, uh, regional issues. There's no presentation, but Genesee Atkins is here if anybody has any comments or questions. So, um, anybody?
I have one comment.
Go ahead.
Just one comment. Um, that is at the, I appreciate the packet. Um, the one for the federal level on the budget reconciliation, we heard last week at the National League of Cities that, um, although it has some good information in it, what's missing is workforce and childcare, which we have as a council said is an important piece of, um, funding that's, that we would like to ensure is there. So I would like to recommend that we, uh, work with our lobbyists to encourage our senators to, um, include some level of workforce childcare, uh, support in that bill.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have one more thing we're going to do. Um, Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce our last item?
This is your last item for this, uh, meeting's agenda, um, and that is the notice of intent to petition for annexation. Um, just by way of background, the council received a notice of intent to petition for annexation initiated by property owners in Bellevue's potential annexation area adjacent to the Cougar Mountain neighborhood. Um, as some of the council may recall, the last time we did an annexation was back in, uh, city back in 2012. Um, staff are here tonight to provide a presentation, after which the council would then vote to accept, modify or reject the notice of intent. So joining us this evening is Emile King, Assistant Director, as well as Kate Nessie, Senior Planner, both from the Community Development Department. And that I'll hand it over to Emile.
Uh, thank you for the introduction, City Manager Miyaki, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Uh, tonight's staff are here to seek council action on what's called a petition for annexation. And as the deputy, or excuse me, as the city manager described, this is in unincorporated King County in the Cougar Mountain, uh, area. This is the last remaining portion of potential annexation area in the city. Um, our last batch occurred down in the East Gate area in 2012 where we had significant annexations. So we will be spending some time tonight orienting council with the process and considerations for annexation as those are really important. Um, and a petition is a type of annexation where the private property owners gather signatures representing at least 10% of the assessed value of that area and bring it into the city for consideration. So we are, uh, now, uh, undertaking that process to get council action. So if you can go to the next slide, please. Uh, we are seeking council action tonight. Um, by state law, council is required to take action within 60 days of receipt of a petition. We did receive this on June the 22nd, so it takes us out to August the 22nd to take action and with the break, we need to do it tonight. So, uh, tonight is the night to, to take action. The options that the council has are to accept, except with geographic modifications as Kate will describe, or to reject, uh, the petition. Um, based on our review of what it would take to undertake this, uh, this annexation at this time, we are recommending that the council reject, uh, the petition and this is due largely to the limited staff resources we have to undertake the necessary work on this.
Emile, are there, are we supposed to be seeing any slides yet or?
Uh, we can see slides.
I mean, I just see action. I was, I.
Yeah, we're just giving a little bit of background on this. We'll get into the details in a, in a minute.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, um, the, the, uh, the three options you have again are to accept, except with modifications, or reject, and our recommendation is to reject. Um, so with that, let's, uh, um, I just want to note that we, we have reached out to the petitioners. We had one of them comment during oral communications. Um, they are disappointed by the recommendation, but do understand that they have other options to pursue through pre-annexation agreements that we can describe in more detail. So with that, let me turn it over to Kate and she can go over our presentation for you.
Sure, I'll give you some background on the, um, annexation process and, uh, go over the boundary that, uh, could be considered and the policy and fiscal impacts and I'll wrap it up with the pros and cons and next steps. So, uh, in 2012, the city pursued a direct petition method of annexation and, uh, this is also the, uh, direct petition method. Uh, the difference is that the petitioners, uh, this is, uh, being initiated by the property owners, whereas the 2012 annexation was initiated by a council and council-directed staff to, um, pursue the annexation. Right now, we're at that first circle there to accept, modify or reject the notice. If, uh, council decides to accept or modify the notice, it would, um, there would be 180 days to collect signatures, um, to, um, for the annexation. If there are 60% of the, um, property owners by value sign the petition, it would then move to council, um, and council would be able to vote whether to annex or not annex. And the decision tonight doesn't, uh, commit council one way or the other on the annexation. Um, if council votes to annex, then it would go to the Boundary Review Board and, uh, the city would, um, uh, create an inter-local agreement to transfer the jurisdictional authority from King County to the city. Uh, as Emile said, we have, uh, 28 parcels left in our potential annexation area, um, down, um, or up on Cougar Mountain. It's that striped part there. The, uh, petitioners, um, included, um, 24 of those parcels in, um, their petition. Uh, the owners, uh, that signed the petition are those dark blue areas. The city of Bellevue owns one of the properties there. It has two of the city's water reservoirs on it. If council decides to, um, move forward with this and, uh, accept it, staff recommends that, um, that, uh, council add the rest of the parcels in the potential annexation area and, uh, retain the equivalent zoning for the parcels. Um, if, uh, council decides to move forward with the, um, annexation, accept the notice of, um, uh, intent to petition for annexation, uh, staff in that 180 days when, um, the property owners are collecting the 60% of the signatures of the property owners, um, staff would be conducting, um, fiscal analysis that, uh, would include, um, transportation and utilities impacts and impacts to, uh, police, fire and development services so that council will be informed on the impacts, um, should you decide to, uh, annex these properties. Um, the analysis would be led by the Community Development Department and significant analytical contributions would be from, um, FAM, utilities, uh, transportation and the city attorney's office, as well as, um, other, um, departments across the city. This would really be a one-city effort. Um, there are some reasons to, uh, accept the, the, this notice. Um, it is in the long-term vision of the city to annex this area and it's city policy to annex the area before the development occurs. So, um, the, the petitioners, um, have indicated that they are interested in developing the area and that is the primary reason that they are, um, pursuing annexation. And so, um, if, uh, if this area is not annexed, they will be pursuing, um, they've indicated that they will be pursuing a, um, uh, pre-annexation agreement to extend utilities to this area so that they can begin development. Um, there are reasons to reject this, as Emile, uh, mentioned, that, um, it would have impact on staff work plans and, um, council may decide that there is a more ideal time to annex this area. For, as for the next steps, if, uh, council decides to, um, reject the notice of intent for annexation, the annexation process ends. There is no appeal to council's decision, uh, this evening. Um, and council has the option of revisiting at a future date and the property owners have the option of, um, submitting, submitting a notice, uh, again. And there's no timeframe. They could resubmit it tomorrow, but I would guess they won't. Um, if council decides to accept or modify the notice of intent for, um, annexation, then there are 180 days to gather signatures, uh, on that annexation, uh, petition and staff would be conducting community outreach and, uh, the fiscal impact analysis during that time period. Uh, if council decides to ultimately annex this area, um, then that would also, um, impact, um, the several other departments to transfer jurisdictional authority. And this process, uh, would take, um, at least a year to complete. So again, the act, uh, staff is seeking action tonight, um, to, um, either, uh, accept, modify or reject the notice of intent to petition for annexation.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's start with a motion.
All right, Mayor, I move to reject the notice of intent to petition for annexation.
A second. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, okay. Go ahead. I'm looking at the clock. Go ahead.
Yes. Oh, thank you. Uh, have you ever had rejected any, uh, annexation petition in the past? How much, how often? To, um, you know, what is the pro and con? We don't really know until we've made the analysis. So what's the traditional practice? I would imagine if, we don't know at this point with our analysis, if somebody has an interest, if they meet a 10% requirement, right? Um, what's there for us not to accept it?
Uh, the most recent, um, annexations have been initiated by the city and so the city, uh, council has directed, um, staff to, um, pursue the annexation. And so the notice of intent to, um, uh, petition for annexation was, um, at council's direction and so, of course, they accepted that notice. Um, in recent history, we haven't had the annexation that has been initiated by the, the property owners.
Oh, I said historically. I mean, so we haven't had any, right?
I, I haven't gone back to.
Okay, so we haven't had any, yes, we know. It would be very exceptional if we say no.
Well, we're not, uh, I guess it would be dependent on the reason.
Yeah.
And so the staff recommendation is not based on merit or lack of merit. It's based on the fact that the timing of it would disrupt all the other work that they're doing. So they're asking the property owners to come back with the request later.
There needs to be some definitive timeline so that they, the petitioner can know.
I think I heard in the presentation that that had been discussed and they anticipated it coming back later. Okay, um, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you. Um, well, it's been my goal to see all of the potential annexation areas eventually annexed, um, so that we will be, um, municipal incorporation of Bellevue, corner to corner without islands of unincorporated on our borders. Um, and so it, it, I'm a little bit dispirited that we, this came in when we can't really take it up because I would love to say yes. I would love to say yes and we need to include the other four parcels. So, um, because when we annex this area, which I expect that we will, we want to do all 28 and just be done with, um, any PAA's on our borders. Um, and it's unfortunate because we have so much going on right now and planning in all the departments, um, including the major comp plan update, the Wilverton update with the bell red look forwards coming as well. So, um, it, this is not the ideal time. We also, at least my expectation is that when we do annex these areas, it will be a negative fiscal impact, um, because they're all residential and we knew when we annexed East Gate that that was a, a negative of over a million dollars a year. Doesn't mean it's not still the right thing to do, but we know it's going to have that impact and we're going into a very tough budget year. Um, so that also makes this not the ideal time from my perspective. That said, and this is going to be a question, um, I would like to see there be water and sewer availability and extensions to these properties, particularly if someone's wanting to develop and they will run the sewer mains, um, out to that area. Uh, I think that would be a really good thing. So I know there's the option of a pre-annexation agreement. Can you just give me a? Can you just give me a very brief thumbnail of what we would expect to have happen with these properties with regard to sewer and water if we do vote to decline to accept the annexation petition at this time?
Do you want me to say?
Go ahead.
Uh, wa, water is, uh, available. Uh, there are, um, six, uh, houses out there that have water from the city. Um, and, as I mentioned, the water reservoirs are basically central to that, um, potential annexation area. Um, the, the sewer extension would be at the cost of the property, the developer, as the, the, um, properties develop. And, um, uh, they have indicated that they are interested in signing a pre-annexation agreement so that they can extend su, uh, sewer out there. Um, they are in the sewer service area, so, um, it's within our policy.
So I guess, how, can we do the pre-annexation agreement, and how long does that take?
Um, yes, we can do the pre-annexation agreement. Uh, it will be shorter than an annexation.
Okay. Does that have to come back to us at some point?
No, it's a, it's an administrative process that does require a few departments to look at it for sign off particular utilities, and it, it does not require council action for them.
So if we say no tonight, that would be, the staff would then get to working on the pre-annexation?
Yes, yes.
Great, thank you.
Um, did you have a comment? Okay, go ahead, Deputy Mayor, and thank you.
Although, uh, Councilmember Robertson took a lot of them already. She does sometimes, but, uh, just two quick questions, so, um, and agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Robertson's, uh, comments. So the pre, uh, pre-annexation agreement, so how long would that take? Is it administrative, um, uh, procedure there? But just, just curious, is, are we talking a couple of months, a year? How long does that take? And then, we're talking about the actual annexation, um, and, and certainly they're more than willing to come apply again at a future date, as you said. But can you give the property owners a sense of when the ideal time would be? I haven't heard that yet, uh, some type of timeframe that they can, uh, shoot for to reapply?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and take the, the part about the timing, and then you can answer about the timing for the pre-annexation agreement. Um, you know, we, we looked hard at this, frankly, about could we take it on now?
Yeah.
And we just came to the, the conclusion that a lot of our staff are working on the, the periodic plan update, where the same staff would be, need to be helping out with this. So we have, you know, kind of looked at 2024 or later as the time to do it, so at least we can put that out there as mid-2024, is when we're planned to, planning to adopt the comp plan update, the periodic plan update, and then after that period, it may be that we have, uh, staff resources freed up. So no earlier than mid-2024 would be a good time to reassess this.
And council can also decide that that's the best time and direct us, that we don't have to wait for the property owners to petition.
Of course, of course, but I'm curious what staff's recommendation.
Um, it, I would expect that the pre-annexation agreement will take a, a few months, it will require coordination between several departments in, at, at the city, but, um, it will certainly be under a year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, thank you. I, I really appreciate the comments, because I agree that, as much as we would like to do this now, and, and I actually do want to note that in your next steps in the memo, you talk about 2024 as a more ideal time, so I appreciate the fact that you were very thoughtful about the, the staffing. And, and I guess for me, as I think about this, this would give the property owners time to actually sign on to the petition for, because when I read it, it appeared that there was only one property owner that signed on and bracket as an unassigned, um, cons, resource to help them. Um, this would give them time to actually get others to sign on, because it appears only one property owner signed the petition, even though they meet the 10% threshold, from what I can tell.
There were, just for the record, there were two property owners that owned four parcels.
Oh, okay, two, okay, all right, thank you. Anyway.
Uh, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I just wondered what, um, what effects could this have on their, their plans right now? If we delay this, are they, is there another action they could take to develop?
Yes.
And do you, yeah. Uh, but they'd have to have the sewer?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so if we don't agree to move the sewer through, that would make it difficult?
Yes.
Yeah, which they know.
Yes.
Yeah, so it sounds like you're working towards something that will approach this. If we, for these, for very valid reasons, not go ahead and do this tonight, and start working with them on this, and, uh, by 24, be ready to go, or as soon as possible.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right, any, bird comments or questions? All those in favor?
If I, if I go yes or no, makes a difference.
Sure.
Do we have, well, I know that we've asked a lot of questions. I appreciate the staff's, uh, predicament, so I understand that completely, and I, I support that. Is it, but you do, you did answer that we can do it later, okay? How long would it take them this and that? Is there any certainty to those things, or just our baby? When you say 2024, when you say pre, pre-annexation agreement, I hope that when you talk to the property owners, there's certainty. So then I just say, well, maybe by, you know, when, whoever. People can do work if there's no certainty. Are we given, providing certainty?
Yeah, I think by, I can answer that one.
2024, pre-annexation agreement.
Yeah, I'll answer it briefly. The, um, you know, this has been part of our potential annexation area for, you know, number of decades now. This is a good marker that there is interest by at least a, a bit over 10% of the AV of pursuing annexation, and us saying tonight that this is now on our radar, and we're happy to reconsider it in 2024, either through a petition or city-initiated, I think is a good message to the, the property owners down there.
My question, certainty, number one, on pre-annexation agreement, number two, on the actual going forward with the annexation. Right? Yes, thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and with that, we are adjourned for the month of August. We will be back on the second, no, on the Tuesday, first Tuesday, on what day?
September 7th.
September 6th.
September 6th. We'll see you then.